I'll the November meeting of the State Board of Education together in session. And to start things off, we will pledge the allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
On age, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start our meeting off by first noting our elevated position up here. I don't know that we're used to this and how we're going to behave, but we're going to try to be good actors today, except for Sean Murray. We'll go around the table and introduce ourselves. I'm Stephen Morris from New Fane and Chair of the State Board of Education.
I'm Sean Murray-Oler and I'm from Bennington and I'm the co-chair with Lachlan, the co-vice chair, sorry, sorry.
Stacy Weinberger from Burlington.
Krista Hewling from Jeffersonville.
Mark Perrin from Middlebury.
Bill Mathis from Goschen, just the other side of the hill.
Morgan McIver, Plainfield.
Margaret McLean from Peachum.
Lachlan Francis from Putney.
Thank you. We want to thank the Rochester High School for welcoming us today and putting us in such a great place. We're loving these chairs that are in front of us and we may move up there at one point.
They're not from musical chairs?
I don't know. So I'd like to call on Kathy Knight, who's the principal of the Rochester High School, to say a few words.
Hold to come over here near the mic.
Yes, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're so glad you're with us today. The chairs, I wanted to point out, were made by students. The art teacher picked them up and got them at local yard sales. Again, our theme this year is sustainability and the students decorated them based on certain themes. We actually have more than that, but we thought we'd bring them and share them with you this morning. We're glad you're here. If anyone hasn't told you yet where the facilities are out in the hallway on either side, I am principal of the Rochester School, actually, which is pre-K to 12.
Sorry.
So not just high school, but it's the whole thing. So we're glad you're here with us and make yourself at home. Okay?
And thank you very much.
Thank you, we're glad you're here.
We're off to a great start. I have a few other announcements, but probably one of the more important ones of the announcements that I'm going to make is that the board wants to congratulate Stacy on her recent change in her family and wish you and the mayor best of luck and we expect to get a full report every month.
Excellent.
So congratulations.
With pictures.
In addition to the normal sign-up sheet, which is in the back of the room, if you haven't signed in, please do sign in, there are some special sign-in sheets for items F and G today. And we would ask you to, if you intend to testify on those two items, to please sign in. We hope to put it in some order before we actually get to those agenda items. It's our intention today in both of those items to take testimony within the allotted time that's on the agenda. So we would ask you to keep your comments, there's a number of people that are going to testify in both cases, I believe, keep your comments as brief as you can, and we certainly would welcome any written testimony in addition if you wish to give that to us. We will not be voting on those two agenda items today, but it's our full intention to bring these items, put them back on the agenda for the December meeting, and take a vote on those items at that point, fully understanding that there's a fair amount of work that yet needs to be done. So please sign in on those agenda sheets if you have not already done so. I don't think I have any other comments to make. Are there members of the public that wish to be heard this morning? Please approach, we're going to ask you to come up here and identify yourself and look forward to hearing from you.
I'm Nancy Dyke. I'm from Wyndham and I'm an educator from Illinois who has retired to Vermont. I've been here a little over 10 years and in that 10 years, I've been trying to get my head around education in Vermont. In September, I attended the board meeting here and there was an educator who shared with us the three Es. He talked about efficiency, effectiveness, and then if those two things are in balance, we are efficacious. Well, we've all been working on efficiency. We're in the middle of a red process right now in our area, but what I'd like to just say a few remarks about is effectiveness. I share your concern about the achievement gap between students in poverty and the rest of them. And it seems to me, as I look at the picture, that if any state should be able to close that gap, it would be Vermont because of demographics, because of low student-to-teacher ratio, the high, high percentage of teacher aides in the classrooms in addition to that, and measures like X-60 and 68. But we are struggling, along with the other states in the Union. Based on my own background of working with staff to pull a school out of a black hole and based on conversations with people like Beth O'Brien in Montgomery and Susan Mack in Dover, who have done the same things, I have a few comments to make about it. I think that the teacher in the classroom should be the focus, not necessarily throwing more money at the problem, not keeping kids after school necessarily, not by adding more specialists to an already bloated system. But I think that every teacher needs to know the strategies for getting kids on grade level. Doesn't mean doing more of what we are already doing, which isn't working, and it doesn't mean retaining kids. So what will it mean to focus on teachers? I think it means specific and ongoing staff development, targeting strategies for the classroom teacher to get kids on grade level, and then getting principals on board. I know there's a teacher mentoring program in Vermont. What about a similar program for principals? Because school improvement mostly happens at the building level. Also, teacher preparation and putting pressure on colleges and universities to raise the bar. Instead of talking about raising requirements for high school graduation, I think we should be talking about raising requirements for teachers. The countries whose students are performing at the top in the world have much higher requirements than this country has. I would like to say just a word for about preschool and how that plays into this whole picture. We know that right now, there's a big push in Vermont for preschools, and that's fine as far as it goes, but I think that first of all, the programs need to be of high quality. And second of all, I wonder if we're aware of the data on programs like Head Start. And that is, again, the program needs to be of high quality, but if programs K through two following that aren't strong, the advantages are pretty much lost of preschool. By third grade, if those programs aren't excellent, it's difficult to tell which students were and were not in preschool. Excellence is the issue. And I would like to make a remark about that, referring to the commendations that were made to districts who seem to be making some progress toward closing the gap. A couple in our area were given those commendations, and I'm sure the intent was very positive, but I'd like to just give you some feedback on how those commendations played out in our area. They were used to actually argue against the red progress, the process that is in progress in our area. The remarks that were made was, see, we don't need to have any other structure than what we have right now, we are doing great. Not only that, we don't need to change anything in our schools. We don't need to change teaching and instruction, we're doing just fine. So I'm, again, I'm sure that was not the intention, but I guess I would like to underscore the problem with rewarding mediocrity. Neither of those schools are really excellent schools that are getting kids on grade level. They're retaining too many kids. And what I see is a real deadening lack of urgency, which was just underscored in this case. This is kind of the barest of outlines of what has been going through my mind, but I will bring it to a close here in the interest of time. I want to very respectfully say that I am just not willing to shut up and pay up like a lot of my neighbors are, for various reasons. It's difficult out in the small towns when you do not support the status quo, and some of them understand that very well. But I think that the price is way too high. I think it's too high in human casualties. I go to the Springfield Prison every Thursday to teach music to the inmates, and most of those inmates are products of Vermont education system, public school system. They're young and they're very poorly educated. They were lost in the system way back in the early grades, and that's a lot of my concern. I think the price is too high, too, just simply for the money we're paying. It really costs a lot per student in Vermont. I'm sure you're aware of that. In our little school, it's approaching 30,000 a year per student, which is about three times the average, national average. And that's a real concern to me. And I have one request from you, and that is, if any of you are aware of schools that are doing what I've tried to briefly describe, and that is having teachers in the classroom using current resources, getting kids on grade level, I would love to hear about it. More schools like Beth O'Brien in Montgomery. So if you know about those, please let me know. I would love to visit them. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've noted that you and your husband have attended many of our meetings and I think we could benefit from your wisdom in the future as well. So thank you. We're on item, any other members of the public that wish to be heard this morning? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
It's been moved.
It's been moved and to approve the consent agenda as presented. It's been seconded by Mark. Any further discussion?
My name is spelled incorrectly somewhere in the middle, which, that's quite all right because it's spelled like it's pronounced, which is fine.
We'll assume that that error is corrected. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye. Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the consent agenda has been approved. Now we'll go on to item F, the Windsor Northwest Supervisory Union Report. The, I think we want to hear from Vaughn first. We have an order of, where is that? I think the best way to approach this is that we would hear briefly from Vaughn and we would hear about the report from Norm Andrews, and then I gather that there are representatives of the various supervisory unions that are under, in consideration here, and they may wish to present. So again, our hope is to gather some information today from all of you and have a thoughtful conversation, but we will move on and not have this vote until the December meeting. Yes?
Since we are 15 minutes ahead, do you think there's people that were going to come to hear both of our presenters right here? I mean, do you, are you aware of?
Yes, sir.
John Pujasik Superintendent. As a matter of fact, I was looking around and I don't see the Assembly of the Supervisory Union who intend to not only listen to the presentation but respond, only because we're about 15 or 20 minutes in advance. I don't know what to suggest other than...
We will stand in recess for 10, 15 minutes. If everyone arrives, if you could just give me the sign and we would call the meeting back to order.
Will, we can, why don't we just come back at 10 and then we'll do that?
All right. Well, the advice of one of my co-vice chairman, we'll recess until 10 o'clock and we'll take up item B when we come back and then move into F. Please pardon me for skipping over item B. I did not do it intentionally, but are there board members that have reports that they'd like to give? Bill?
I've done a bunch of things this past month, and many of you went to the Diane Ravitch Dinner and Show at Dartmouth, which I thought was quite good. A number of you, as well as myself, attended VSA and VSBA, also visited with the Extended Year Group, and they are doing great stuff. They have, in the space of four years, had a convention or a meeting of some 400 extended school people up in Stowe, and I'm really pleased to see what they're doing because that's one of the keys that's going to pay off. We'll hear more about the Legislative Administrative Meeting. Stephen, I attended that, and the sentiment there is to do less legislation, but that doesn't seem to always happen with the legislature when they get in session, but it was a good meeting there. Also, the Ruttland Regional Superintendents and legislators, similar meetings, similar sentiments. Local superintendents were raising the question of behaviorally disturbed children in classrooms. This seems to be a really big issue and deserves attention. I don't see legislative attention on this, but it's a huge thing that we probably ought to visit with. VIT had a finance thing, also a NASB thing on the feds, and nothing much is happening in education with the feds. That seems status quo ante, and that's about it.
Bill, can I, sorry. Can I ask a clarifying question? Was the concern about kids who are misbehaving or students who have diagnoses that aren't, whose needs aren't being met, or students who are disruptive in the classroom? Or is there a distinction?
Their concern was students disruptive in the classroom, some of whom would be 504, some would be special education, the whole potpourri. But the thing is, is when you're a superintendent or a principal or a teacher, is all you need is one or two really disturbed and acting out kids in your classroom and things fall to pieces in a hurry. There's civil rights issues there that have to be protected, but there's also the very realistic problem that it is disruptive.
Thank you.
Lachlan?
So since our last meeting, do you have anything else, Bill? Do you have anything else in your...
No, I'm...
So since our last meeting, I was also at the VSBA, VSA conference. I spoke briefly on behalf of the board on our priorities for this upcoming year. I thought it was a great conference, definitely learned a lot. There's a lot of good stuff there going on. I also attended the Diane Ravitch Lecture at Dartmouth, and then two weeks ago, I presented at the Vermont Vision for a Multicultural Future Conference at Mount Snow about kind of equalizing access to educational opportunity. Armando was there, so that was good. And yeah, that's about it.
Krista?
So besides being at the conferences, and thank you, Stephen Dale, for inviting us for the Vermont State Boards Association, that was a great conference. I also was with Bill at CVU and we took, listened to testimony about the EQS, and that was very helpful. And it was, I think, the most helpful thinking, listening to people, they were really looking for a blueprint, and we were looking at it almost as a philosophical document, so I think the combining of the two. Also, I went to Albany for a NASB conference on the Common Core, and I felt that was really helpful, not just for being a board, but even as a teacher. I thought the most powerful part about it was looking at the S-Back test and the culminating tasks that students are going to be asked to do, and that they were really authentic, high-quality tasks. And I wasn't as scared, I think, as the S-Back when you really sit down and look at it. And I think the scary part is the implementation, is the cut scores, which we were warned about. The cut scores are going to be a three-week window where the cut scores are going to be made, and so we want to make sure next September, we're involved in that process because it could be in between meetings. So that's something to be aware of. Also, with NASB itself, they're really willing and really anxious to come and talk to the board and just what services they can provide. And they really, especially with Common Core, there's one person working on Common Core, the specialist, that can offer testimony, come in, do policy research for us, and they're willing to do that. And I feel if we're going to maintain our membership with NASB, we should take advantage of that. If we give them a task, they'll actually do research and bring it back to us. So Ephron, he would like to come sometime and talk to our board. He's in California, so he just needs some advance notice. But it is a really good resource, and it also made me thankful for being in the state of Vermont because other states were talking about using S-Back as graduation requirements and other things. So I think we have a really realistic view of the test itself and how it's not, it's just one piece. It's not a holistic view of a student, just that one test. It might be a good test, but it's just one. So I think we're really far advanced in other states. But I think we should take advantage of NASB and their resources because they're seeing things from a national level and what's popping up in all different states. So that's something that I said I would connect with the board about and maybe set up a time that they could come.
The Legislative Committee this afternoon will be looking over the budget proposal that we would, I guess, give back to the agency and the agency would put in their budget and go to the legislature with. And one of the largest budget item in our budget is the NASB dues. So I know the Legislative Committee will be talking about that this afternoon, and when we come back, perhaps the full board will want to explore that apropos of your suggestion. Other members of the board that wish to be heard?
I would mention that Mark Perrin did go to the Northeast Kingdom for the hearing on EQS.
Yeah, took, had a nice afternoon to drive up to Orleans and saw Jill and a few other people in the room, but it was, it was a quick, to-the-point meeting. It was very nice.
Good. Yes?
Well, I won't repeat that. I was also at some of these conferences, and one of the things I'd like to add is, in the southern end of the state, we also do educational legislative breakfasts, and the same topic that Bill is talking about in terms of disruptive students is very, very much on the minds of the educators and administrators in the area that I come from. And our legislators, the senators and the House reps from five local towns were, they're asking what they could do. There was really no suggestions, I mean, there wasn't really the time and place, but it is definitely on the minds of educators how this is making it difficult in the classroom. So...
Okay, we'll move on to item F, a discussion item on the Windsor Northwest Supervisory Union. And again, what I'm going to suggest is that Vaughn and Norm Andrews start, and then we'll call upon the Superintendent of Windsor Northwest and the other abutting superintendents and members of the public. I would, if board members have questions while the various witnesses are testifying, you'd ask your questions. After we hear any additional comments from the public, we will then have a board discussion, hopefully with some direction to the December meeting. So with that, gentlemen, would you introduce yourselves and proceed?
I'm Vaughn Altimus of the Agency of Education.
I'm Norm Andrews. I did the financial piece of this study.
Mr. Chairman, in the interest of time, I will be especially brief to save as much for Mr. Andrews as possible.
Repeat that one more time, Vaughn, just so...
It would take too long. It's easy enough to read my report, and you could read his with some care and still have questions. It is difficult to talk about the education side of a situation when the proposal is to move six districts in pairs to three different supervisory unions. That's largely because local school boards continue to be responsible for the education of their students, and there are two consequences of those, of that. The first is that the local districts should feel a significant measure of security. They have the ultimate responsibility for educating their young people, just as they always have, if this comes to pass. For example, a question that was asked most often was, will we be able to main choice? That is a decision of local board and district voters. Nothing here would change grades operated or not operated, anything along those lines. The second implication of moving six districts to three SUs is that they're different and the implications in each are different. The one thing that's most constant is that the full integration of districts into new supervisory unions is going to take time. There isn't a substitute for that. We know that there's not a substitute for that. We believe that people operating in good faith can do that. There are situations where, in the past, they have, in the case of Two Rivers, also in the case where districts have asked to change boundaries and the board has approved. But there is no substitute for time, and this creates a gap between comments on the educational experience of students, which, if they're going to improve, and we believe they will improve, are going to improve over a period of years, and the financial implications where you need to focus very much on the here and now and the way the money moves immediately. If you were to go out five years, which is a very reasonable period for seeing the fruition of some of the possibilities in these changes, there would have been so many decisions by SU boards and local boards that the boundaries around any financial predictions would make them virtually meaningless. A substantial portion of the opportunities created for the receiving districts and the, or the receiving SUs and the moving districts will be the result of the use of savings generated by closing the Windsor Northwest Supervisory Union office. There will also be grant money moving with districts. The receiving superintendents, and we have listened to them carefully in their board chairs, believe that the amount of money that we've allocated for increased front office expenses is not adequate, that it will cost more than we think it will. We've taken their comments very seriously. The complicating factor is that these are among the leaner front offices in the state to begin with. So, not naming names, there's a particular hard-working business manager whose superintendent said, you know, if this comes to pass, you know, clearly this person is going to need a bookkeeper. a bookkeeper. Frankly, I agree with that, but I also would argue as hard that she deserves a bookkeeper right now, as the responsibilities get elevated to the Supervisory Union on Transportation, Special Ed., and so forth. What the agency asked Mr. Andrews to do is to figure out the costs associated with moving new districts by itself, and we felt we needed to draw a line between that movement and the process of possibly filling in gaps in a lean supervisory union front office. Throughout the state, supervisory unions are confronting additional responsibilities. It's important to keep in mind, first of all, that this is a model. Local districts and supervisory union boards will approve budgets and they'll move forward, so we're not constraining anyone, and there are substantial additional savings. And if supervisory union boards were to conclude that portions of those savings should go to expand supervisory union boards, I think it may well be, in fact, I do think it would be a very reasonable conclusion. But we didn't feel it was our place to step into their judgment over a period of years. We thought it was more important to leave it up to them. Sorry. There are some advantages that should be consistent across supervisory unions. When you add schools, there are increased opportunities for professional development. You have more teachers in one subject, teaching the same grades, and that allows for increased interaction, sometimes mentoring, so on and so forth. Larger supervisory unions are typically able to achieve some economies of scale. There's a point where that no longer works, but certainly in this case, and possibly throughout Vermont. I don't think, at least at the supervisory union level, we're likely to run into that problem. Looking briefly at the individual supervisory unions and the districts that they would be receiving, Orange-Windsor Supervisory Union, in our model, would receive Bethel and Rochester. If that were to happen, the supervisory union would have four high schools. That's a lot of high schools. All are small. I think it would be fair to say at least one could be defined as struggling. And here, there's an exceptional opportunity. It's not original with me, and I know it's actually been thought about a certain amount already. Names will be withheld to protect the guilty. But you can imagine those small high schools working together, specializing in areas, I don't know if magnet's the appropriate term, but offering, in addition to the basic curriculum, unique opportunities. And you can imagine these four small high schools integrating into something greater than the sum of their parts. And that's not going to happen overnight, Mr. Chairman, board members. It's going to take time for districts to be comfortable with one another in the SU. The pressures that may mount might accelerate that a bit, but it's going to take time. It doesn't even require a change in governance. They could achieve this sort of thing with supervisory union agreement and simply operating their high schools within the local districts. If it started to work well, they could formalize it further, either with joint schools or with a union. But that would be unnecessary. They wouldn't have to change anything about the structure. I'll just mention briefly, Bethel's the third highest spending district in the area of special education in the state, or it was in the year we looked. No doubt that special education spending is hugely related to the needs of the student population. The agency has found, however, that there is generally a component of spending in high spending districts that doesn't correlate with the special needs population. And it's our sense that, over time, working in the new environment, we actually built in a buffer so that they would be integrated more slowly with the supervisory union, but that those costs could go down as well. In West Windsor, if you include the, if you include Pittsfield, which would move well over half of all of the students going, tuition students in the high school will be coming from within the supervisory union. That gives an advantage in terms of curriculum development. You know where a lot of them are going. That's not the same for Stockbridge. I don't know the extent to which they would be inclined to, if they were in the supervisory union, look upon the high school as a more viable option. I would imagine some would. It's worth noting that the largest proportion of these students attend an independent school, Sharon Academy. Another point that's very early, so please note it parenthetically, but I do feel obligated to mention it. Pittsfield School District has begun preliminary steps such that if no boundary change were to occur, it would pursue a boundary change to Windsor Central on its own. So that is out there as a possible issue. But as I said, it's very, very early. There hasn't been a formal step taken yet. They've been asking questions. Washington-West Union with Granville and Hancock. Neither Granville nor Hancock operates a school. Both pay tuitions for all students. The number of students that Granville tuitioned to Rochester is fairly significant. To some extent, the same for Hancock. One of the downsides of this potentially is if students were to become more interested in Washington-West, it could put additional pressure on Rochester in terms of reduction in tuition students, so we feel obligated to mention that. Right now, very few of the students in Granville and Hancock attend schools in Washington-West. A big issue here is the amount of work involved in, at supervisory union level, in managing non-operating districts. And obviously, districts receiving, non-operating districts are concerned, particularly if they don't have any. We attempted to get an answer to that, and found out that the answers varied pretty much across the spectrum. One business manager said it's nearly as much work, you know, we need to, we wind up doing the residency checks ourselves, you know, we take over the special ed., so on and so forth. Another business manager said it's actually not that hard at all. There are more meetings. We worked out a situation where the superintendent attends one, the business manager attends the next, and there's a great deal less bookkeeping. It's clear that there's a great deal less bookkeeping. All of the reporting associated with student testing and so on and so forth, and increasingly extensive questions about teachers and teacher backgrounds and so on, none of that's there. The number of cells, I checked one non-operating district, and it had 30 expenditure cells in our annual report filled in. And then I checked a union high school, and it had 80-some. If you were to actually look at the journal and see the transactions that go into those cells, it would be a fraction. So the actual accounting piece of it, the journal piece, is considerably reduced. The final business manager that I asked is almost evenly divided between operating and non-operating districts, and had an operating and a non-operating district added in the past two years. So that seemed like a, she seemed like a very good person to ask, and she's an experienced business manager. And I can quote her, she said, "There's no comparison." She said that it's orders of magnitude easier. I think in the places where it's hard, the supervisory union is attempting to be a substitute district, and in the places where it's considered a lot easier, they've developed efficiencies to handle it. And I think that those are possible, and that there are people you can reach out to to learn how to make that process a bit more straightforward. I should point out that in the financial estimate, we did not allocate the $150,000 transition grant that goes by statute. We didn't do that because statute didn't exactly say how to do it, and we haven't figured out a fair way to accomplish it. But there would be a sum of money, part of which would have to be used to close out the final books of the existing supervisory union, and the remainder of which would be available for transition expenses for the receiving supervisory unions.
What would be the normal time or process that that grant would be allocated?
It would ordinarily be allocated in any time they wanted to draw it down, from July 1st of the year in which they take responsibility for the students. And the secretary hasn't, to my knowledge, made a decision about the date, but my sense is where we are now, and given the amount of underlying preparation time, that may wind up actually being out as far as, certainly it wouldn't be sooner than 2015. And if we work with the supervisory unions and they'd like additional time to work through things, we could imagine it being further than that. So it's basically, when they become responsible for operating the districts by statute, they're entitled to 100, their share of $150,000 from the fund. I do want to leave the board with one last thought, and first stress, it's a back-of-the-envelope calculation, but I asked Superintendent Williams of Two Rivers how much a year in savings over time, he thought the merger was continuing to produce. And his estimate was $300,000 a year forever, with presumably a COLA built in as everything goes up. Now, $300,000 is not a fortune. On the other hand, it's not something you walk by if it were lying in front of you. So I wanted to leave you with that thought.
Great. Norm?
Good morning. I want to give Vaughn credit. Usually when we start talking about finances, the table clears like there's a plague here, but this morning, at least, he hasn't gotten up and left yet. You have had my report to look at, so I'm not going to go through it line by line, obviously. This has obviously been an interesting trip, to say the least. The initial phase of which was to take a look at Windsor Northwest and see what pieces of it would disappear in this process. And Windsor Northwest is one of the few districts in the state who has actually, even before Act 153 and 156 were in place, consolidated its special education at the supervisory union level. And not only has it consolidated it, but they also share in the costs. So they're everyone's kids. They're not your kids and my kids, which is really unique, except that in the case of the receiving districts here, none of them have consolidated yet, and they all have their own costs. So part of the task was to disaggregate the Windsor Northwest specialization costs, so that each district then would know what it brings to the district that it's going. You can't bring your assessment, you have to bring your actual cost. And, you know, there was the knowledge beforehand that the formula that was in place was not accurate, if you will, to the costs that were being incurred. So that did generate some shuffling, as you can see from, I think it's Exhibit 10. You can see some of the costs that moved within districts, which has made pretty significant differences in Stockbridge and Pittsfield's assessments. Part of the other intriguing piece of this is how assessment methodology impacts districts. Assessment methodology is the method by which a supervisory union assesses its costs back to participating districts. Supervisory unions don't have any taxing authority, so all they do is take their costs, aggregate them, and push them back under various formulas. Statutes do not require a particular assessment methodology. It can be whatever the supervisory union elects, and has tremendous impacts and creates winners and losers in consolidation effort. And I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but I do want you to understand how critical it is. And if you look at Exhibit 9, that just shows you what each of the existing districts in this project use for assessment methodologies. And when you move from a district that is using ADM, for example, to a district that's using equalized pupils, it just creates havoc. You can't really predict what something's going to look like when you start until you go through the assessment methodology piece, and it's really critical. In this particular case, there are four supervisory unions involved, and if you put all the different pieces together, there are nine different assessment methodologies that impact these districts in one manner or another. And so as we look at these in the future, it becomes something to really think about. It creates significant winners and losers if you aren't careful. So additionally, there are governance changes that will have to be made by these districts because neither of the receiving districts have non-operating districts within their supervisory union currently. And statute gives voting right differences to non-operating districts than operating districts do. So the receiving districts will have to work on their governance issues to some extent. And additionally, one of the things that becomes an issue here is most of the assessment, or a lot of these districts use enrollment as an assess, as one of their assessment methodologies, and non-operating districts do not have enrollment. So therefore, if you use enrollment as an assessment methodology, they will not participate in the costs of the supervisory union piece. So, you know, we have discussed on numerous occasions what's the perfect methodology, and I'm not sure that there is one, okay? If I were to choose, enrollment would be the assessment methodology. If I were to choose, enrollment would be the assessment methodology that all districts would use, and there would be a flat charge for non-operating districts for accounting services, et cetera, et cetera. Any, any assessment methodology that you have, other than enrollment, adds additional costs to supervise, to individual districts who have school choice, because they're paying pieces of assessment methodology from more than one district. Wherever there's tuition involved, there's a supervisory union charge as part of it. The grant revenues were reallocated to, and is shown in here, so that you can see what new grant monies are going to go to districts, who would receive what, and...
What chart is that?
It's on the bottom of Exhibit 3. It just shows what new money, additional grant funding will be going to the three receiving supervisory unions. And as Vaughn spoke to, and as I'm sure you'll hear later on today, we proposed some infrastructure support for the receiving districts, and I don't think we need to belabor that a lot. Obviously, the superintendents of those districts would like to see more revenue. We tried to be careful to give them, not give them, to increase their supervisory union by X amounts to cover what we felt was the cost that would be incurred. As Vaughn said, they all operate with probably less administrative support than they should have or would like to have at this point, but it was our feeling that there is additional savings over and beyond what has been allocated in each one of these districts, and should the boards choose to reinvest some of that money in additional support, that's certainly their prerogative. When we did the Two Rivers consolidation, if you remember, there was about 480-some-odd thousand dollars worth of projected resources in that study. The SU board chose to spend about $180,000 of that on various and sundry pieces, and actually saved about $300,000 when they got all done. So, there is money here that can be invested in additional infrastructure support, should boards choose to do that. I just want to cover quickly the financial highlights on Exhibit 2. When, when we took the Windsor Northwest supervisory union and looked at it in pieces, the central office assessment would disappear along with the special education administration pieces. Those total $734,000. And just to be specific here about the email that was circulated this weekend, that does not disrupt any of Windsor Northwest's technology costs. Windsor Northwest does not assess or does not budget technology costs at the supervisory union level. They're all budgeted at individual district level and are shown on those districts as, sure, Norman, contracted services. There you go. I knew it was there somewhere, just had to fish it out. So, out of the 734,000, we projected 247 to go for infrastructure support for the three receiving supervisory unions. Some cost savings are passed directly to individual districts, and then some go, as you can see, to the supervisory unions involved. That totaled roughly 487,000 dollars worth of resources here that can be either saved or redistributed. I'm happy to talk with you about anything that you have questions for, or, you know, subsequent to this, you can feel free to ask questions. I'm just not sure there's a whole lot of sense of deliberating significantly longer on these various and sundry pieces here.
Do board members have questions at this point? Sean Murray?
Norm, this issue of different types of assessments in all the different SUs
Yes.
is a little troubling, in that it's really hard to compare apples to apples. So, one of the things I am going to ask you to elaborate on is, it is my understanding that even without students in a district, if you're a sent, if you're a choice, if you're a choice town, can you hear me?
Yes.
Then there, let's just say there's 100 students in that district, and those 100 students are going wherever.
Yeah, they're in yawn, yep.
The district is still responsible for reporting to AOE. They're still responsible for the, for the, for the count, for those number of students. They're still responsible, as the LEA, for the special ed coming back and forth. So, I'm curious why you would prefer, in your opinion, a flat rate fee versus a equalized pupil tally. If, let's say those 100 students are 3% of the district, you know, wouldn't you think that the funding streams through the SU would be a more appropriately imbalanced for services that they're using? So, if they don't use technology, they don't get assessed 3%, if they're using financial services and administrative services, they would be, they would be charged 3%. I'm just curious why you would just flat fee it.
I'm talking about where districts are completely non-operating at this point.
With no students.
Okay, with no students?
Oh.
Okay. That, it's, you, you're exactly correct. For example, in this particular case, Stockbridge tuitions their 7 through 12 kids to outside districts, but they run a K-6 program, okay? So, they're going to, if you use assessment, for example, they're going to get assessment, if you use enrollment as the assessment model, they're going to get an SU assessment based on the number of kids that are actually enrolled in K through 6. But they won't get any assessment for the 12, the 7 through 12 kids, because they're not enrolled. They are attending someone else's district. So, there are, like I said, there's, I don't think there's a perfect SU assessment methodology, but when you have a completely non-operating district, there is no enrollment, yet as an example, they receive all of the services in some manner or another to which you refer, okay? Not technology, but they certainly have special ed case management. They have all these other things.
Well, they could choose to put technology at the supervisory union level.
Yes, absolutely.
So, my other question has to do with the statute and the structure, and then it is my understanding that any funding streams from the SU to the districts have to be agreed upon by the, the SU. In other words, if, if a district, if an SU decides to change their funding streams, so that one district is no longer being charged for a certain category, it's by statute, if, if you do nothing, it has to be a certain way according to statute. But the board can actually vote to alter, change, or agree to a different funding stream.
Absolutely correct. If, if supervisory unions don't agree on an assessment methodology at all, enrollment is the state statute, okay? But beyond that, it's whatever an SU agrees on. There are, you know, beyond the ones that we've talked about here, I know supervisory unions where their supervisory union assessment is based on the number of professionals, quotes, in the, in each district compared to the total.
So, that would be appropriate if someone was assessing payroll, but it wouldn't be assessing, it wouldn't be appropriate if somebody was assessing special ed.
Right. I know one where the assessment methodology is the total of your budget compared to the total of everyone's budget, okay? So, it's all over the firm. There is no consistency whatsoever.
But I guess what I wanted to confirm is that the supervisory union itself has the ability, not just because the business manager or the superintendent starts doing it, but the board actually has to vote on that different methodology.
Yes.
So, in your experience, have, have the SU boards voted on all these different assessments?
I think you would be scared if you went into a supervisory union and asked them when it was established and what the basis was and actually find that it happened.
My guess is you're not going to get an answer.
You're absolutely correct.
They would be very old minutes.
Oh, I haven't, as a matter of fact. It's, it's just, it's one of those things that gets done, and of course, when you change it, there are always winners and losers. And so, sometimes it's just easier not to rattle the trees, you know?
Well, that brings my point to the collaboration, because if the SU board is to make these determinations, they have to agree that this is beneficial for this one and not for this one. They have to have, have some compromise or understanding that what, what's basically what they consider fair.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions? We'll have an open discussion on this at the conclusion, but if you have questions of these witnesses, Mark?
Yeah, I, I know that we're talking primarily finance here. I'm, I'm wondering if you factored in at all the relationship that the districts will have relative to the supervisory unions and the outcomes of students, and if that weighed in at all with any financial piece. I know we're talking about assessments and from the SU to the districts, and, and Addison Central, we actually had one of those votes just in the last month, and we switched from full-time equivalent to equalized pupil. And there were winners and losers. Ultimately, the discussion we had at the SU level was outcomes for kids, and we thought that the outcome for kids would be beneficial once we, we could start seeing that we were assessing by equalized pupil.
Yeah, when we, the first consolidation that I participated in was the Two Rivers one, which was a consolidation voluntarily of two districts into a new district, and we spent hours and hours on assessment methodology. And the answer to the question was yes, outcomes were part of that process. In this particular case, because these districts are going to new districts, they have to accept whatever methodology is in place in that district at that time, unless in fact, it's agreed that they will revisit them together and establish a new one. And so, the answer to your question is here, no, simply because they have to accept what's in place where they're headed, okay?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Chairman, in fact, just very briefly, you can see the quality of the reports of the interested supervisory unions and the time it took to produce them. They were equally cooperative with us, and we extend our thanks.
Thank you. We'll next hear from the superintendent of Windsor Northwest. It's quite all right.
Carl Grapi, the chair of the SU. He's basically going to speak to your issues today.
Thank you.
I came along as support.
Just for the record, would you repeat your name, please, and your position?
Sure. My name is Carl Grapi. I'm the chair of the Windsor Northwest Supervisory Board, as well as the chair of the Stockbridge Town District.
And John Puljazek, outgoing superintendent.
Thank you. The cause of the whole problem.
That's right.
Well, sir, I actually am the author of the email that Norm was referring to that circulated over the weekend. I'm assuming that you were CC'd on it as a board?
I'm not, I, I got it, and I'm not sure if I sent it out.
Ask Carol.
I received an email.
Sorry, excuse me?
It was forwarded yesterday to everyone.
Then I will follow Vaughn Ultimus's lead and assume that you've read it, or at least looked it over, and I don't need to go through that. The comments that I had were around three areas. The first area is the area of the numbers, the comments of the receiving super, superintendents notwithstanding, about their feelings about the cost analysis and the costs going forward, I think are telling, as well as the comments about the costs of, of our centralized programs and technology and after-school being equivalents to the costs that we are billed out as contracted services. Our concern is, or my concern is, is that you've been presented with a figure of $700,000 and change as savings to the ed fund, and my concern is, is that as that number does not materialize, it will be the responsibility of the receiving SUs and the districts to not have met that. And so, I want to make sure that we understand that, that number is, is, is a projection that perhaps is not, is a good first cut at a problem, but perhaps as we find the devil in the details, that, that amount of savings will not emerge from the ed fund. There will be additional costs in Bethel, Rochester, and Stockbridge to replace an SU-wide after-school program, an SU-wide technology program, with individual consultants and individual staffs at the local districts. So, while costs won't move on to other SUs, they will move on, to some degree, on to the, to the local districts. And as the receiving superintendents have indicated, they expect that their costs will be perhaps higher than that projection. The second piece, and the most important piece for me as an SU, well, as a town district board chair going forward and moving into new supervisory unions, is the governance piece. As, as I understand it, by statute, your authority as a state board is to redistrict us into whichever configuration pleases, pleases the board, and, and that's fine. But our concern is that the authority of the process stops there. You know, you toss a couple towns here, a couple towns there, and you figure everyone's going to work it out. The concern we have is that there is, is, as indicated, really the only problem-solving methodology is the SU board sitting down and agreeing to configure itself in a more equitable manner. When you look at, for example, Washington West, and I'm just using them as an example, you can read the letter from their superintendent and their, their opposition to this move. If as an SU board, they decided that, you know, we were forced to take Granville and Hancock, therefore, all the expenses related to receiving Granville and Hancock should be paid by those towns, and we will alter our, our assessment methodology to cover that scenario. There's 21 votes of the existing board, and there will be two votes of, one vote for Granville and one vote for Hancock. That'll be voting at that table. And that leaves their recourse, if they are, for example, added all these, their, their only resource becomes lawsuit, or trying to petition the legislature, many of which serve both communities in the existing Washington West and Hancock and Granville. So, what I was really hoping we would see and that the board would consider is looking at, at some sort of way to address these grievances. Current statutes about consolidation really seem to reflect the idea that, at the end of the day, there's a vote by all the receiving towns and, or all the participating towns. Every district and their voters get to come to the table and say, "We think this is equitable and good for our kids," or "We don't like it." They can vote thumbs up, they can vote thumbs down, and as a matter of fact, the way statute is written, as I understand it, and I'm not a lawyer, but if any of the towns agree not to do it, the whole thing falls apart. That's why we've lost so many Reds. And if they don't, if, even if they agree to do it the first time, they can reconsider it later. So, it, it seems fairly obvious that statute is structured towards voluntary ground-up consolidations, where all the people have the choice, after looking at the works that the boards have done, and looking at the studies that have been produced, the people have the right to say, "The, we like this, this is great for our kids, let's do it. We don't like it." In this kind of situation, where it's coming from the top down, that part of, 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 of the equation is taken out of the picture. Where there's not going to be, you're going to make a decision, and in December, one hopes it's December, we'll find out if we're going or we're not going. The people of Stockbridge will not choose, people of Barnard or Woodstock won't choose, you'll have chosen. And that's, that's fine, that's the way it's written, but our concern is about how to fairly negotiate those, those assessment formulas, those governance agreements, those SU business, all the stuff about 153, transportation, those kinds of issues, how to be, proceed equitably in these new, these new partnerships you've built. I really would ask the board and the agency to consider some sort of arbitration grievance mediation process that could be, that could be brought to the table and, and, and used to resolve, at least get these, get these agreements off on, off on a positive foot. And I don't think that's addressed in the current, the current scenario, and that concerns me for the success and the, and the, and the equitable relationships moving forward if, if the scenario went through. The last piece, we finally did get an answer in Vaughn's report, that the AOE has determined that four SUs, or one SU dissolving into three SUs counts apparently as, as one SU. counts apparently as one SU transaction. I would put it to you that that is probably not going to be a... I don't think that's the best way of looking at the situation. I think that when you're looking at an SU being dissolved into three receiving units, it's almost three different transactions. The Windsor Northwest books are going to be, have to be unpacked into three different accounting systems. The student records are going to have to be unpacked and moved into three different central offices. The sped records and the sped documents are going to have to be unpacked and moved into three different offices. So I would, I would suggest to the board that this be viewed perhaps as three transactions, certainly not just a single consolidation. I think that's going to put undue costs on all the four SUs when the day is done.
So in making that point, are you suggesting that there should be $450,000 in grants as opposed to $150,000?
I'm saying that you can look at it as three different, as three different transactions. You've got essentially three different SU mergers that are being completed. I don't know that, I don't know that you would need the full $400,000. I do think that $150,000 is inadequate. And then finally, the last point I want to bring to you is the same point that a gentleman from Pittsfield brought to you the last time we had this conversation over the merger, over the articles of merger submitted by the towns of Bethel and Rochester's a few years back. Ray Rice was his name, and he made a comment, he said, okay, we've been through a study now, and now it's time to decide. So I'll put that same point to you. I think that there is value in the letter that you received from the Chair of Windsor Central and similar comments that I made in my letter towards doing some targeted studies that are being done at the receiving SU level where they know their books, they know their procedures, they know their governance and policies to look at the feasibility of this. I think there needs to be some sort of mechanism for ensuring a solid equitable start to a partnership, should the state board decide in this situation or in other situations to move these things along. And I think the financial support needs to be there from Montpelier. But I think you need to, in this case, I would like you to decide. We're having study fatigue in our SU. This study was announced, what, a year ago? Was delayed a number of months in starting. Did start, we're having, we're experiencing morale issues. We're having concern about staff retention as the specter of 60 SU employees potentially losing their job just continues to hang over the balance. So whatever you decide to do, it's your pleasure. You are the Vermont State Board of Education, but please decide quickly. Thank you.
I find it interesting that in the testimony that we've heard so far, it's all about money and governance to some extent. I have not heard anything about student opportunity, which is interesting. That's more, I guess I'm breaking my own rules. That's more of a comment than it is a question. So as I understand your testimony and your letter and things that you've said before, you're opposed to this as the way it's being proposed right now?
Correct. This, it, well, I am opposed to this.
From the supervisory union point of view, not from your...
From the supervisory union point of view, yes. There is concern that all of our, all of our members will not necessarily be treated fairly and that it may not be in the best opportunities for all of that.
Now, this has gone on for some time. I don't even remember when we started this whole process, but it's got some age.
It does.
And as you heard me say earlier, we're going to vote on this in December. Whether I have the votes or not, we're going to vote on it in December.
Thank you, sir.
In that month's time, if you, can you sit down with the various players, including the agency, and work some of these things out?
I can certainly...
Or do you want the board to work them out?
I would certainly welcome being part of the conversation. It's, you know, as I think everyone knows, this is perhaps the worst month of the year to add additional meetings between all the holidays and school vacations and such. But we can certainly, we can certainly work towards that. As far as, you know, the, I do agree with Mr. Altimas' point that in some ways, the student impacts are mitigated because they are not being consolidated, they're not being moved out of their own school. I think that, you know, a lot of the comments that, I don't feel as a school board member necessarily the most qualified person to opine upon educational opportunity. What I do know, as far as finance and educational opportunity, and I'll speak as the Chair of Stockbridge, is that the way that the financing works in the state of Vermont, the local children often come last. I will get a sum of money, and out of that sum of money, I will need to pay my central office assessment no matter what. I will need to pay my sped assessment no matter what. I will need to pay my tuition for all my upper school kids no matter what. I will take less from the state because we've added the Department of Corrections schools and we've added various other costs that I have to pay, you know? So the person at the la, sitting at the back of the bus is that second grader from Stony Brook Road that, you know, is being told that because we're paying for all these other things, there's not going to be really a good gym program. Or in our case, we cut field trips last year.
Thank you. Are there, Sean Marie?
I just wanted to clarify something. I, in reading this report, I did not understand or take away that the Ed Fund of Vermont was going to save 3/4 of a million dollars. What I understood was the possible potential savings, which would then be reallocated, was somewhere near half a million or 400,000. And that that was a continu, that was the district's choice whether or not to continue that savings year after year after year. So it wasn't, it isn't the Ed Fund. It's your local, it's your local taxpayers that that money is going to impact, not the state of Vermont. So I just wanted to make that clear. I mean, you said the Ed Fund, is that what you meant?
Well, the 487, as I understand it, is money that'll be, that in theory would be saved by the Ed Fund. When you eliminate the 700-some thousand dollars and... Norm, am I, am I saying this right?
No.
Seven, there's a 734, that Exhibit 1, I think? It's got $734,000 as the savings in Windsor Northwest Central Office Administration. And then some savings in sped administration. The total's like 734.
Correct.
Yes.
And then that's debited like 247
Yes.
for the potential costs. So I guess the savings to the Ed Fund is 487, so I did misspoke.
But it's not to the Ed Fund. It's to you. It's to your local taxpayers, not to the big thing in the sky.
Yes, but we're going to be, my point is, is that that money is not truly going to be a savings because there's, as you pointed, well...
I don't really follow you.
Okay, I'm sorry, let me try explaining it again. The, that 487,000 dollars is dependent...
Let's call it half a million.
Okay, that half a million is dependent on, it only costing $20,000 for Windsor or Washington West to accept Granville and Hancock. If it costs more, that half a million dollars would be less.
Right.
It's assuming that Superintendent Bickford doesn't have to, in his letter, he doesn't have to leave his office and relocate his SU office, and he can, he can get by with only an additional $200,000.
Right.
Right? And so my comment is that if, as those superintendents project that number is higher, there's not going to be that half a million dollars of savings. If as I, if I project that we can't run an after-school program and have technology support for the amount of contracted service funds we pay to the SU, that money would be less. So my concern about the financial piece of it is that our, the taxpayers will expect that they're going to receive a half a million dollars in savings that may not truly be there. Because we haven't gotten into the details in terms of really how that moves around.
Right, but it is your taxpayers. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's just a terminology difference here. Is Ed Fund has a precise meaning that's different from what you're talking about. But I think it is your local money that you're talking about.
Yeah, I misspoke.
Other questions from the board?
I do have one.
Okay.
So what I hear in your voice is a lot of fear. And I'm just, I really don't, I mean, I understand it very completely when somebody's talking about closing a school or, you know, consolidating schools. But you're talking about people who will be spread out in other ways, right?
Correct.
And so is the fear where the 60, maybe now 50 employees may work?
Uh...
Or who they work for?
The fear is that there's, there's going to be a lot of effort made and a lot of time spent, excuse me, by a large number of board members in central Vermont to rejigger themselves to this configuration that, as Mr. Altimas has said, you know, we can't, we certainly can, we certainly will say it probably won't hurt the kids. We can't make a really strong case for it really being a significant benefit. Magnet school opportunities notwithstanding, they could have those now, just if the schools agreed to do some kind of sharing. And in our area, we do AP course sharing and technology sharing already amongst other supervisory unions that aren't even represented here. The Green Mountain Forest Collaborative is a collection of SUs here that share services like Mr. Altimas spoke about. The fear is that the time we could have spent working towards SU consolidation or other issues about, you know, the problems that we're confronted with, with declining enrollments, increasing costs, the fact that the legislature is ratcheting down the penalty, making it harder and harder for us to effectively budget and educate our kids. You know, it's just, spending our time doing this means we don't, as volunteer board members, have time to do other things. And that, if there's a fear element, it's that.
May I speak to that, Chairman Morris?
Yes.
In simple terms, fear of change is what I think we were experiencing. I listen to this every month. And I have been listening to them every month now for three years.
I think we should make a decision today.
That's the history we've been talking about with consolidations. Been on our agenda almost every month for three years. And there is a fear of change, but there is optimism too. Because most of my school directors do believe there is a need to do something different. They just don't know what. They don't place, I'll speak for them, not out of place, but they don't feel as though that this is fully studied yet. And what you were mentioning, could we resolve some issues in a month? I will speak to that, no. Because first of all, it took the agency five months to get the study started. And you would be asking us to try to resolve these issues in one month in a very difficult time of the year. I wouldn't give up on this, probably because I'm the only native Vermonter in this auditorium. I don't know.
That's not true.
Two of us.
That's not true.
Okay. But anyway, I'm just one of those who doesn't happen to fear change. I just think there's a great deal more of work to do. You're talking about a supervisory union right now that is very small, with under 500 children, spending too much money per child that could be better spent in other ways. But you're also talking about six school districts. Three are non-operating. A fourth is, K6 was school choice, 712. And the other two are K12 districts in three different counties. This is, this is big. What a project you picked for consolidation. I can't, I won't say that it's not possible. I'm just saying it's got a lot of work to do. And what Carl failed to mention, another one of the fears, is, fears are a reality, is this time I am retiring, really, Bill. And, and they do need to move forward and hire a superintendent to take them into the next phase of this, or whatever is necessary. And so that too is another change, if you will. I wouldn't want to see you give this up because I think there's merit to the study. I personally don't second-guess Norm Andrew's numbers. But I do second-guess the process that's been used because I've lived through it for several months now.
Maybe this doesn't get resolved until it has to get resolved. Maybe we're better off voting today and making sure it gets...
There we go.
Go on a course to get it resolved. That's a question.
That would be my suggestion, yes.
And the, and the chairman is nodding his head as well.
He is.
You would prefer a vote today as opposed to giving you another month to work some of these things out?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions?
A quick technical question. The 50 employees that are uncertain about their future, are they mostly special ed and Title I teachers that we're talking about? Or are you talking about central staff?
Bill, there, we have a consolidated contract. That too is the 153 responsibility. But we had that in place before 153. And because of that, we have employees in Stockbridge, employees in Bethel, Rochester, and a fourth entity called Windsor Northwest, of which there are roughly 60 special ed teachers, parent educators, title, and central office. And I'm not saying they would be unemployed, but there's nothing by statute that requires the receiving districts to hire those people.
Okay, so basically, they would be employed, but that doesn't keep the anxiety factor from being pretty large for those people affected.
There would be an anxiety factor, but I don't know that they would be guaranteed employee employment. We would advocate for them to be employed, for sure.
I understand.
Sean Marie?
I have, when you talk about employees, I have, I just, one, a simple yes or no will do. Do the three or four supervisory unions have similar SVSU employee contracts?
I don't think so.
No.
I know that behind me are my colleagues that probably want an opportunity to speak to this. It wasn't a yes or no, was it? But...
All right, fine. Anything else you want to add?
No, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess I would ask that if the three superintendents, budding superintendents are here, if you all three would come up and sit at the... What, what'd I say?
A budding.
Say, why we're transitioning, just two years ago, had you had this meeting in August, September, your feet would have been in water. The flood actually came up over this stage, whether or not. For Irene there. And the restoration here is really the work of principle at that time.
And please proceed.
My name is Bridget Shepherd. I'm the Superintendent of Schools for the Washington West Supervisory Union. Good morning.
And I'm David Bickford. I'm Superintendent in Orange Windsor Supervisory Union.
And I'm Alice Worth. I'm the Superintendent in Windsor Central, which is in Woodstock. So I guess I'll begin. Thank you very much for the time in advance to hear our positions and our points of view. I might begin by asking you respectfully to reconsider the vote for today. My supervisory union board received information from the AOE that your vote would be in December. Were they to know that it was going to be voted upon today, I believe they would be in attendance. So I'm here to represent the Executive Board of the Washington West Supervisory Union. They would like you to know that they're very proud of their high-performing schools and their balanced and frugal budgets. I would also like you to know that my remarks and our positions are not meant in any way to be disrespectful to any others' points of view. But they are strong. I think this is a very important topic. And I think this is a decision that will have long-lasting ramifications for everyone involved. The Executive Board of the Union met on October 9th, and they received a thorough report, as thorough as it could be at least at that time, based on the information we had at hand. And they voted unanimously to oppose, to the degree that they could, and make you aware of the fact that they are unanimous, that receiving Granville and Hancock is a detriment to RSU, and it is not in the best interest of the taxpayers in our six towns. And I'm going to explain to you their thinking around that. But before we do that, the most important point to be made here is that our position and this topic is not at all about students or learning. The reality is, Washington West already has the capacity to take all the students from Granville and Hancock, and we would willingly do so. We would love to do so. If we had more than the three kids attending our schools that are listed in the document report that you received, then we could increase transportation. That would not be prohibitive. And all those students could easily be absorbed into our organizations. And as I said, we would be glad to do that. Our position really focuses on four key areas. The first is that this report is not an impact study. It is not really identifying the real increase in the workload and the capacity of the current state of the personnel employed in Washington West to carry out these responsibilities. The second point we'd like to make is that we strongly disagree with the calculations in the report, in particular, two key numbers. The $20,000 indicated as needed increased costs to operate. I have asked repeatedly for verification and backup data as to how those numbers were arrived at. Unfortunately, I have not received it, so I can't say that I've been able to analyze the thinking around that number. The 19K in savings, and I'm going to try to round numbers and use K where I can, just in the essence of time, is in our minds a savings that's indicated for distribution of assessment for the supervisory union budget that now would be dispersed over eight towns instead of the six. That's predicated on the 20K being a real number and a... That's predicated on the 20K being a real number and a number of other elements of the financials report that we strongly disagree with. The third reason that we are in objection is there's no consideration to what it would actually take for us. We would be different in this arrangement than the other two SUs, because we would not be receiving employees. As you know, these two towns do not operate schools. However, they have choice, and I'm sure they would likely continue in their choice, which means that we would need to communicate with and interface with 15 additional schools within Vermont at considerable distance from RSU in order to, and this is about kids, to serve those kids well, especially in special education and the responsibilities for the personal learning plan legislation that's coming forward for all students in grade seven to 12. Those LEA responsibilities would then fall on my office, because those two towns do not operate schools. And the fourth reason that the board would like you to understand is that they're not exactly, they don't, let's put it this way, they haven't had, I don't know what this says about me, but they haven't had a great track record in hiring over the last 20 years superintendents, based on their geographical location and the size of their district. The reality is, this is a big business. It's, we're one of the second largest, we are the second-largest employer, I believe, in Washington County. We span 42 miles from Warren to Waterbury. We serve 2,343 students. Our operation is about a $38 million operation, and we have 381 employees. We do that with only 12 people at our central office. When you look at other SUs our size, you'll see that they are somewhere between 14 and 17 employees doing the same work. I realize that one of the comments in the report is that, well, that situation exists anyway, and that Granville and Hancock could create a tipping point, and that it sort of says, I think softly, that the boards need to acknowledge that and increase staff already at our central office. That sounds nice. I think the AOE should come to town and let them know that that's their point of view. There's really not much of an appetite for increasing our supervisory union budget. It has been difficult going forward, and I think enough said regarding that. Our position is that the report lacks thoroughness, that important information regarding costs to the WWSU is omitted or downplayed as minor adjustments. The 2013 report is neither a true impact study nor a realistic estimate of the future anticipated costs to RSU. The report did not include and consider all of the available data to accurately project the ongoing realistic cost, realistic estimates of the savings, and, most importantly, the increased costs to our six existing towns regarding the distribution. I'm not going to go through the middle pages. As you can see, we've tried to indicate for you the kinds of work that would need to be done. The report doesn't go deep. It doesn't look at the day-to-day realities of taking on those responsibilities and trying to quantify them in some reasonable way. Those are the pieces that you see in the middle. I would, however, like to take some time under additional comments. The revenue assumptions, in our opinion, are incorrect. They assume an offsetting revenue of $36,497, the same as fiscal 214. This represents a fund balance carryover from the previous year of $25,999, which is not likely in the future. Right now, we're projecting a fund balance of $1,000. We do not concur with the assertion and calculation of offsetting revenue of the 20K in expense. It's not realistic. We believe the savings represented will not be realized, and the offsets to our current districts, however minimal, will continue to shrink as the enrollments in Hancock and Granville likely decline. These towns will incur difficult budgets because of the continued decline in equalized pupils and increased tuition costs. Budgets may begin to be defeated and require multiple votes, which will take time and increase the workload. The small increase in the consolidated grant funds that Washington West would receive would be required to be spread over four schools. This would result in very little impact. These funds could not be used to offset the increased operational costs at our central office. Adding two more districts would make the WWSU a nine-board operation with considerable increased administrative responsibilities. This change would have a permanent adverse effect on hiring and retention of high-quality administrators, which has been true over the last 20 years. In the last 20 years, I'm the number 14th superintendent. And I am in my fifth year, so I'm staying. The other SUs can benefit from a more diverse student body and an infusion of new ideas with other staff professionals. Neither of these things would be benefits for Washington West, receiving two districts without employees, schools, and only currently receiving three students at this time. The long-term projections are completely absent from the study. The report is filled with statements such as, quote, "Increased educational opportunities emerging out of supervisory union boundary changes are likely to appear over a few years." Statements such as this are really not based on data or prior experience. With all due respect, they're merely the opinion and/or the wishful thinking of the author. The need to significantly increase our central office budget by increasing personnel to truly do the real work, whether or not it is substantially less than operating districts, doesn't matter. It's still clearly a lot of additional work. It's completely unrecognized or quantified. They state that the relatively small size of the front offices in these SUs are the result of decisions made by supervisory union and district boards over an extended period of time anyway, and the fact will need to be rectified regardless. The point there is, yes, like other Vermonters, we have been struggling to keep our budgets down. The last place where money is available is at the SU office. The first place we tried to scrounge those dollars is at the local school for students. The financial savings calculated in the report are predicated on numbers of which we strongly disagree. We've already touched on the $20,000, 10 for bookkeeping and 10 for case management that's stated in the report. When that savings is dispersed, the $19,000 that they claim we will receive in decreases in assessment, it would range between $1,000 and $1,500 for our four small towns, and somewhere between $5,000 and $7,000 in our very large towns like Harwood and Waterbury. But again, that's predicated on only spending 20 to get the job done. Our assessment, and we won't go into all of the details with you, we estimate it will cost $165,000 to get the job done. When you carefully look at what the work is and break down the work in special education, you look at what's really required with the reports. And again, I heard Norm's comment about the cells, that maybe it wouldn't take as long. I think that is just cherry picking, frankly. That's one example. If you get deeply into special education, PLPs, stat books, residency requirements, mediations for the kinds of things that happen in schools, and the list goes on, I think they're stated earlier in the report, we don't feel that's reasonable, and we outline for you what we feel would be necessary to get us where we would need to be tipping point or otherwise. The lack of understanding of what it would take for the staff to communicate with, well, 15 additional schools that these students attend must be noted by the board. The authors do acknowledge that the case for additional central office resources appears strong, but they stay away from a recommendation. They say it's better left up to boards. Of course they do. As you can see, there remains a significant difference of opinion between the consultants producing the report and the actual administrators involved in the day-to-day operations of the great, with the greatest understanding and knowledge of the real work. The additional Title I funds, or title funds, that we would receive, again, would have to be dispersed throughout four to six of our schools, but on the other hand, it must be noted that we would be happy to receive any and all increased funding. There are approximately 68 students from Granville and Hancock. They attend 15 other schools, as I stated earlier. The authors also state that as districts become more involved in the new supervisory union, this is a quote, "It is reasonable to expect some increase in the number of students tuitioned to WWSU." I say that's nothing more than opinion. I think parents make these decisions very thoughtfully, based on, really, the community relationships, the friendships and associations their students have, and the geographic barriers of access and bus rides. The proposed change may only be advantageous or acceptable to our six communities if Hancock and Granville actually designated Washington West schools, and the SU would receive the ADM to offset the additional costs to operate, especially in the central office, and they became wholly and completely part of the family. Increasing an already large SU with seven boards to nine has many ramifications that cannot be easily quantified with dollar amounts to represent the true, long-term, and undesirable consequences for us. We strongly contend that the proposed change as written will be detrimental to our union. The necessary increased cost to implement the plan will increase the taxpayer burden in our six towns. Thank you for listening. I'm happy to provide any additional information your board might need going forward to make the most informed decision possible. Thank you.
Mr. Bickford.
Thank you. I want to begin by saying an apology for my document. I reacted to the report that came from the Agency of Education, and unfortunately, I had only the financial report to react to. And I, notwithstanding that, and I think I perhaps paid a little more, too much attention to the financial implications on our supervisory union, but I also felt it was important to tell the story of what has gone on in this region. Because after all, this is a human endeavor, and it's going to affect various organizations, institutions, and individuals, both in a logistic sense, but in an emotional sense. And I tried to convey to you that we've been engaged for a number of years, three and a half, four perhaps. When the specter of consolidation first was, or most recently was brought out in a series of reports made both to the Board of Education and to then the Department of Education, my boards cautioned me to make sure that the tone and tenor of our response was both analytical and accepting, because these are, our school districts are neighbors of ours. We have engaged them in conversations over the years. In fact, we've taken steps to begin to involve students in collaborative activities, and we feel that the opportunities here are just as important as the cautions and the costs. When we met at the Agency of Education in September, part of the discussion talked about the consolidation at Twin River, and when, and furthermore, the proposals that were brought to the State Board in August for Batonkill and Wyndham Central. And my words to the, my colleagues and the agency staffers who were there, and to the secretary, were, it's the difference between a courtship and a forced marriage. It's the difference between commitment and compulsion. I think there are opportunities to be had, and very, very recently, I was put in touch with some of the work of a person, a professor, at the Kennedy School at Harvard, Ronald Heifetz, whose work is around the practice of adaptive leadership. And one thing that I found absent from nearly all of the reports that I've read, mine included, was the critical role that leadership needs to play. Not just the kind of leadership that is kind of the clockmaker, make the clock, start it ticking, and give it to somebody else to function, but the kind of leadership that is there to guide people through the very tough, emotional kinds of questions, the analytical ambiguities that have been pointed out here today and you've encountered elsewhere. I was intrigued to know that Ronald Heifetz was a consultant to George Papandreou back in the 80s and 90s, when Greece and Turkey were going head-to-head, and it looked like they were going to war. And over a period of many, many years, he coached Papandreou, and Papandreou worked with his people and ultimately reached out to the Turks and were able to reach understanding, if not accommodation. With that in mind, I want to share with you an aphorism that a dear friend of mine sent me when I first became an administrator. And he looked at me and he said, "Remember, you don't have to see eye to eye to walk arm in arm. I think we're at this juncture. I don't believe that there's any one best system or any single correct answer." Clearly, in my mind, if the State Board votes to send or to commit Rochester and Bethel to Orange-Windsor, we will welcome them and we will rise to the occasion. If, on the other hand, you choose to keep Windsor Northwest intact, we will continue to reach out in a collaborative way to the best of our abilities, not only to share resources, but to engage students.
Thank you. Ally?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to say thank you to my colleague. I, too, am a student of Heifetz, and I really believe and echo everything that David said. I'd just like to mention that, you know, the memo included in your packet was simply a memo from me to my board, and presenting topics for discussion at our board meeting to kind of, you know, identify in a bulleted way some of the considerations and concerns we have. We also agree that the estimated cost for folding in two more school districts into our SU is low, but with all due respect, I'd also like to point out that I didn't personally consider what Vaughn mentioned today. We, too, are a district that's probably understaffed, and so, you know, I didn't totally, in my Director of Finance, we probably didn't totally consider our starting point when we looked at that. But we clearly have identified some challenges that are going to be placed upon us in order to do this. That being said, I would like to go on record, for myself and our board, we are totally open to working through this challenge. We see some real educational advantages, and I would like to mention that some of the comments of the first speaker today really resonated with me and are directly related to two of your goals, one of which is closing the achievement gap, which is the biggest challenge for us in the state. And the other is around governance, because that, too, is a challenge that I personally feel is a huge roadblock and an impediment to achieving the equity and effectiveness of our schools for all students. One of the things we're trying to do to address the achievement gap in our district is noticing that we have increasingly diverse needs of students, and as our schools are getting smaller, an increasingly less diverse staff to serve those children. Absolutely. We see a saving opportunity is to work together to professionally develop the core of staff that can be deployed strategically across schools to meet the needs of kids. One of the things that we find is, because we also have a lot of mobility, not only with special education, but with regular education students, we have to be very nimble in our ability to meet the needs of those kids. So how does this bear on this potential consolidation? I think it could benefit both the schools that would be leaving the already existing Windsor Northwest Supervisory Union and those coming to us if this were to happen, because I think we would be increasing our staff and our ability to develop the specialties of those staff that are needed to be used to serve the needs of kids. So not an awful lot was discussed in regards to the education advantages, but I would echo the... echo the first speaker in saying that the only way to close the achievement gap and improve opportunities for kids is to have a highly effective, nimble, trained group of teachers that can be deployed outside of the four walls of their small schools. And also, you know, we would need to take a look at the governance structure. I think that the board can be a useful tool in promoting some, both legislative and discussions across the state to make some changes that could help us. We're struggling with governance the way it is. And it's not just the external governance of the districts and their relationship to the SU, but it's the internal governance of the SU itself and its ability to work collaboratively, reach a common vision, and support each other. So that's all I would have to say.
Thank you. Kristen.
Can you just follow up with that and what suggestions in particular you would make and encourage us to work around governance? So what are the things that you would need to change, just more specifically?
Well, you know, my colleague, Bridgette, is absolutely right. The stressors on superintendents, and we're preaching to the choir, you guys know, you pay attention to the comings and goings. The stressors on the superintendents and the business managers have never been greater in this state. I've been an educator in Vermont for 35 years. It really ties our hands. We have got to figure out ways to hear the voices of our local districts, to have them come to the table, but in a smaller, more focused way, to make collaborative decisions that are best for our kids. You know, I initially lived in the Northeast Kingdom of Vermont, and it's the largest supervisory union, of course, in the state. My children attended a school that in a good year, we had 50 kids, and that was, you know, 20 years ago. So that school actually is now closed. But I think that when you're looking at local control, when we as educators are actually looking at the needs of kids, they don't differ from one school to the next. Our vision to have common standards, common professional expectations of our staff, common contracts, these things, in my estimation, are what's going to save our state and our education system, and that has to be dealt with in a more focused way at the supervisory union level. We've tried carousel models, we've tried having executive boards. I think there needs to be more impetus for local boards to utilize those mechanisms to work more effectively and in a more focused way. And as long as they can have the old fallback positions, it's just never going to work.
I put out a sort of a position paper for us to go to one governance structure. Now, that takes care of some of the logistical and financial pieces, but I also recognized that the local control for our schools is centered around what I've termed three issues: culture, climate, and instructional philosophy. People do not want the culture of their schools undermined, the value systems that drive the programs in our schools. The climate, what does it feel like? Is this a friendly learning place? Is this a place that stresses efficiency? And instructional philosophy, is this about all students' learning? Is this about educating the high flyers? So I have a proposal, and Vaughn asked me this week if I would share it. But I think that a hybrid, I don't want to say solution, but approach, needs to be discussed. I think we need to reexamine our biases around what local control really means. We go into our communities, folks say local control means we control the budget. Well, we don't, not to a large extent. But what they're saying is, we want to know the values that our kids are getting, what kind of experience do they have as participants in this community, and what are the instructional objectives and outcomes? So I think we need to reexamine that, certainly open myself to further discussion.
It'd be great if you'd contact the committee, or they'll contact you, because I think you have some very valid input. Thank you very much.
I got a question before they leave, if I could.
Bill?
I just want to make sure that I've summarized what I've heard without putting words in your mouth. David, in your letter, you had raised some financial objections, but I don't hear you making that kind of statement today, but there was some financial issues that you had raised. Bridgette, you were pretty clear in saying that you don't think this is too great an idea and would like more consultation. And Alice, you've raised some questions here, but you didn't really come out with a recommendation as to where you were or where your supervisory union were. Am I capturing your folks' positions properly and due? Could you elaborate if, as necessary?
I think you're capturing mine. I think that I'm kind of the winner in the conversation, because Granville and Hancock don't operate schools. So I really think there are some really different elements to both sides of that story as it would relate to these other two SUs. And if I could just share one thing that I forgot to tell you that I should have told you, and is also in the report, we just passed our SU budget. We're trying to make some corrections to some things that have been deferred, and it's got 11.1% increase in it. The board passed it unanimously, and they're prepared to sort of advocate for that and hope that the communities can see their way to provide it because of the infrastructure needs that we have. I just wanted to share that on their behalf.
Bill, I would characterize my remarks not so much as objections, but a lamentation that the, that the report, as it was developed, didn't look at what more it would take. Because we, our budget is in draft right now. We've just reduced it from a 5.8% to about a 3.4% increase. And we've had to take on additional responsibilities because we've centralized special end. My point is that if the state report more accurately reflected the real costs, then when we go in before our voters, we do not have to apologize for increasing the state's, over the state's estimate.
And Bill, I would say, you know, this is going to sound a little wishy-washy, perhaps. I would say that we are open to this, and we're willing to do the hard work. We recognize that there's going to be some challenges and some struggles. We're optimistic that people could come together around a change like this, to do the right thing for kids, and to work together collaboratively. It may be wild optimism, but the people with whom we've spoken, both at Stockbridge and at Pittsfield, seem to share that willingness to move forward.
Stephen?
Yes?
Bridgette, just one follow-up, because I just want to make sure I have this correct to you, that if the schools designate, instead of having school choice, would that make the merger more palatable? Because that's what I heard from you, and I just didn't want to make sure, that wasn't me just interpreting that. So if they did designate that your schools, instead of school choice, so you wouldn't have to deal with 15 other schools?
I think it would make it more palatable. I don't think it would mitigate all of the points of the report.
Okay.
Yeah, but you're right, we wouldn't have the 15 schools, we would have 68 students to collect ADM on, we'd have the richness of infusing our student body with those students. You know, those benefits would bring a better balance, I think, to the dilemma. It wouldn't change the fact that the superintendent would still have 24 more board meetings to attend, et cetera, et cetera, in the middle pages of what the financial officer would need to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public that wish to be heard on this agenda item? Sir, would you come forward?
My name is Francis Russell. I'm a Rochester resident. So I think my comments might be more Rochester-centric than what you've heard recently.
Which SU are you?
I'm a Rochester resident, Francis Russell.
What SU is that?
The Windsor Northwest.
That's the current Windsor Northwest Supervisory Union. I wanted to speak to the board. Thank you, Mr. Morris, and the board members for inviting me to speak. My opinion is that I see no compelling reason to dissolve this SU, particularly in terms of the significant savings that are, you know, being proposed by Mr. Andrews' report. I was at the October meeting when he presented his initial figures, and then he didn't get a very favorable response at that point. And now I see additional figures, and it just seems like the, I mean, I'm reflecting the superintendent's view that the costs and the savings are just not realistic at And I'll make another point, this is something that Vaughn Altimus touched on briefly. He was talking about, we have Rochester School, and Rochester School, the enrollment is, in part, coming from, you know, Granville and Hancock. But, so there's a proposal to send the students who might be capturable from Rochester-Hancock to the school district centered in Waitsfield. But I think the short-term implication of that, and it's something Mr. Altimus mentioned briefly, would be that there wouldn't be a sufficient population to have a high school here. I mean, we are, I think Rochester School is the struggling school that was mentioned. But I think the implications of the short-term implementation of your voting to approve this plan would have serious implications for Rochester School in particular. On the long term, I mean, I see the benefits of this proposal as an experiment. I see that schools could, you know, cooperate, and we could have magnets. But I think Mr. Altimus is not crediting the short-term implications of implementing this dissolution of the SU. And I think, in truth, you really don't have, I mean, you can kind of, you know, project what would be the impact of dissolution of this SU in terms of enrollment, staffing, budget, thinking, for example, of transportation. But parents, I mean, parents have kids, and they'll make the best choices they can with their flesh and blood. So you, so, I mean, I think in truth, you really don't know what the short-term implications of, for example, sending, you know, for example, Hancock and Granville to Waitsfield will be. I don't know, I mean, you don't know. Parents will make the best choice they can. And so I think, I mean, I guess my final point would be, you know, I really believe in local control. And I think what the board is contemplating right now, if it's voting to dissolve this Northwest Supervisory Union SU, I mean, you are running just counter to that. I mean, I'm one of these people who wasn't born in Vermont. I came here from Massachusetts. And one of the reasons I came here from Massachusetts is that I like being able to speak at a town meeting. I like, for example, that I'm here right now. I'm glad I'm retired, so I could be here. But it seems to me what you're doing, what you're doing right now, I mean, I could see some long-term benefits in what you're proposing, but the short-term benefits, I guess I don't, I guess I think it's precipitous. I guess, I'm reflecting all that I've heard previously, that there hasn't been enough thinking to do this. And I think the short-term, the short-term, whatever the long-term benefits might be, the short-term effects will be injurious to students, they'll be injurious to staffing. I mean, if I were a parent and you were proposing, in Rochester in particular, moving the students who are feeding the enrollment in this school to other supervisory unions, I'd probably make another choice if I were thinking of sending my kid to Rochester School. Or I might think about it. So I don't know, it's such a, this is such a, I mean, voting to go forward with this plan right now seems to me just a roll of the dice, and I think it will, I think it will hurt kids, and I think it will, I don't know. I mean, I guess that's where I come down on it. And as a Rochester resident, I guess I would, you know, ask you, beseech you to hold off on voting for this and defer action on this until, until what you've heard today can be, you know, taken into account and considered, right? And I thank you for your patience, this will act form a little, I'm afraid. Okay, you have a real-life citizen in front of you, not a talking head from one of these, I don't know, supervisory unions, all right? I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there other members of the public? Please come forward. Sir, are you in front? Maybe I'd ask other members that intend to testify to come down to the front row, please.
Yes, I'm Marvin Harvey from Rochester. I graduated from this high school before, long before this building was built. By the same token, I know the supervisory union is going to be dispersed somehow, and I do not think it should be going in the Orange-Windsor direction, because we, as we are in Rochester, now with a decent road over Bethel Mountain, we are connected with the Randolph and the Orange County area of this state. Because our hospital or our rescue squad, our vocational school is all there and has been very effective for Rochester. Now, as far as Bethel is concerned, it wouldn't make much difference which way they went, probably. By the same token, if Rochester and Bethel need to go together, they should. They've been rivaled for 70 years in sports, but that's okay, and so forth. We need the competition. But anyway, we belong not in the Windsor, Orange Southwest, Orange Windsor Southwest, I should say. But anyway, I would like to think that we should be looking towards the Randolph direction.
Do you think an Act 250 permit would be required in any of this?
What? What are you?
I'm just...
I was afraid you'd recognize me.
I did. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I see, and I am too, so I'd be seeing these meetings. Maybe I should quickly explain that comment. Both of us serve as Act 250 commissioners in two different districts, and we see each other occasionally at state meetings, so that was the reason for the extraneous comment. So. Pardon me.
Good morning. I'm Sandy Haas. I'm the state representative from this district. I happen to represent four of the six towns in the supervisory union, Rochester, Bethel, Stockbridge, and Pittsfield. And I want to echo the comments of Mr. Russell a few minutes ago. I think the great risk here is that we will lose our Rochester School if this proposal goes forward. Because we are, in fact, relying on the students from Hancock and Granville, and if they are suddenly part of a different community, however ephemeral that feels, I think that's really going to change things. I want to thank you all for coming here today, because you got to experience what I have a hard time communicating to anyone who doesn't live here, which is the isolation of this valley and the difficulty of getting here. I don't know how you all came, but basically, there's a mountain between us and the rest of the world. And on one level, that is one of the things that makes Rochester an incredibly special place, because a lot of energy is focused inward in this community. We have a great theater group, we have all kinds of community activities, we were the poster child for recovery from Irene because of the way that people pull together. Our school is the heart of that community, and this proposal threatens that community. So I ask you to think about it carefully.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A team.
Please introduce yourselves and then go forward.
Hi, yeah, my name is Chris Berber, Pittsfield School Board.
And I'm A.J. Rubin, also from the Pittsfield School Board. Thank you for letting us talk today.
I appreciate it. I would like to address some of the educational concerns that we have. In our town, we do not operate a school and have not since 1968. We have 71 students now, K through 12. Of those 41 go to schools in the Windsor Central Supervisor Union. They do not go to Windsor Northwest. In particular, of the elementary population of 35 kids, we have 29 that go to Killington Elementary School in Windsor Central. So we think that by further investigating and possibly joining the Windsor Central Supervisor Union, we can help those kids get more streamlined services that usually come from a supervisor union, such as special ed, triple E in that. We also think that one of the implications, and I think this was brought up earlier, but I'll emphasize it again, toward improved education. If we go ahead and switch, or at least come to a decision on this, is that we'll have improved talk about education because we will talk about education and not just about governance all the time. We are very concerned that the small supervisor union that only has about 400 students will have difficulty replacing John Poljasic. Our supervisor union was in great financial and personal upheaval before he came. He straightened a lot of things out, but we're very nervous about hiring and retaining good administrators for this small supervisor union. We also have already proposed a significant salary increase to replace him in our budget. And I also think that the overhead in administrative costs is getting high. Over the years, we have investigated all kinds of things to reduce administrative overhead, including sharing superintendents, sharing business managers, the Green Mountain Collaborative, all kinds of things. But eventually, it comes down to you need a core administration, and those students sort of have to -- there's an overhead cost for each student, and it can't go much lower. And I think that's about all I had. So.
So I'd like to just sort of remind the board that Pittsfield has a long history of being interested in this idea of changing governance and consolidating. Our town, five or six years ago, budgeted, I think, $4,000 out of the town fund to hire a consultant from the School Board Association to tell us whether we, you know, where we should go, whether that would be good for our children and good for our budget. That was a fiasco because the report really didn't answer any of those questions. But what it did sort of do is burn our town out of going to, you know, monthly meetings for over a year about that. The new study that was done by the Agency of Education is sort of equally concerning in that there's not a real faith in the numbers and the implications. And as you heard the superintendent say, the people who are closest to the ground are the most concerned about that. But I tell you this history to let you know that our little town is very interested in moving out of the Windsor Northwest Supervisor Union. We think that that would be, in the long run, better for everyone. We have two requests of the board. The first is that you vote no on the disbanding of the SU in your December meeting, but that you budget -- but that you budget, or you ask the agency --
A unanimous vote?
Yes.
Sure?
I'm pretty sure.
He parses things.
That you -- and we wrote this to the secretary on a letter. We need some financial help to negotiate all the details of what the move to the Windsor Central Supervisor Union would mean. It's our belief that if we are given time and some extra funding to work out a deal, that we could arrange a deal.
What's going to change in the future that hasn't been there in the last three years, that you haven't negotiated a deal? I mean, this has been a long process.
A lot's going to change. And so this is really not funny.
I don't mean to be funny. This is a serious question.
Because people's education really winds up on this, as well as our taxes. So what's going to change is, we've spent, as I just said, we've spent years and years and thousands of dollars trying to study this. We've really gotten nowhere. For whatever reason, now we are in conversations with the Windsor Central Supervisor Union. Both our board chair and their board chair wrote a letter to the secretary saying that we're interested in consolidating, but we've identified a myriad of details that could make or break such a move, meaning that they could make the move good for our children and our taxpayers or bad. We, as a volunteer board, do not have the time or the expertise to figure out and negotiate all those different arenas and those areas. We need help to make that agreement, that deal, to mediate that deal, so that maybe next year, a town meeting, we can go to our town and say, we have worked out this contract with Windsor Central Supervisor Union. This is going to be good for our kids, and this is what it's going to mean for the taxpayers. That's what our town folk deserve from us. And the $4,000 we spent four or five years ago didn't get us there. The money the AOE just spent on Norm's report didn't get us there. We cannot go to our town in March and say, we're pretty sure that by going to the Windsor Central Supervisor Union, we're going to increase outcomes for kids and decrease the rate of increase of our budget. We can't say that. We hope it's true. We think it's possible. But there's a lot of these little issues that if we don't work out, it could backfire on us. So my point to you is that there could be a real change between now and, say, next summer.
March 2014.
Or March 2014. There could be, if we had the resources, not much, to work out a deal. That's for our town. My hunch is that if you gave the same funding to Hancock and Granville to work with the Northern Supervisor Union and to the other towns for the Southern Supervisor Union, that those towns could work out an agreement, and that we would feel comfortable about what it would mean. And that we would go to our towns and say, yes, let's do this because it'll be good for the kids, because I think everyone agrees. The Windsor Northwest Central Supervisor Union, our current one, is sort of not viable. But we're very afraid, and you heard the fear in Carl's voice, we're very afraid that we're going to go to our towns and say, either this is happening to us, and we'll just do the best we can, or we think it's a good idea, let's go for it, and it will backfire and hurt our children and hurt our taxpayers. So my request to you is that you help us do this right and not force us to do it, leaving us possibly, as the ugly stepchild in the room, as one of the superintendent said, not part of the real family because we have school choice. We don't want to be wound up, we don't want to wind up like that. We want to go in as a full contract, like with a prenuptial and all that kind of stuff involved. So our one request is that you don't force us to go in December, but you empower us to do it in the right way, and we'll do it on our own. You know, we don't need to be told to do this. If we have the funding to make a good deal, we'll request that we get to be moved. The second request is that you help us by making sure we have a superintendent to lead us through the next year or so. I think you have to authorize a vote for us to have a new superintendent. I don't think that we're going to be able to get through this by the time John Poljasic leaves. We're going to need another year or two. And it's really important that we have leadership because really bad things happen to our supervisor union without leadership. So I think that that is my request. I'll definitely defer to my board chair in case I have misstated what our goal is. But I think our opinion is that we want your help to do this right, and we don't want to be forced into it yet.
Thank you. Yes.
Can we get, is there any legal clarification about what kind of authority the board could have with regards to dispensing funds to towns to do, work them in? There's no authority to do that, right?
No.
Well, I guess my request would be that you ask the secretary's office to respond to our request for funding in a positive way.
Just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Just so you know, there's been a change between the department and the agency, and the board no longer oversees the agency.
I read something about that. But I think, you know, you have a new secretary coming in, and so there's a lot of room to maneuver here, and my only request is that.
She works for the governor, not for this board. That's the point.
Thank goodness we're all working for the children of the state of Vermont. That's why we're here.
Good point to leave it. Thank you very much.
Actually, I got one question because I sort of heard this a little bit. More money, more time. And if Armando was here, he might say, we'll give you a year, and then we'll make a decision.
We don't want a year. And I'm sorry, I'm speaking a little bit for Alice Worth and Jay Leiter at the Windsor Central Board. But when we were talking with them at a meeting earlier this year, it was a little bit of money to have somebody who worked with their business manager so that we could have some solid numbers to present to our town, to say, you know, currently, this is what we're paying to be part of Windsor Northwest. If we switch to Windsor Central, this is what we will be paying. And it would be done by March 2014 so that we could present it at our annual school district meeting.
So the time factor for you is March 14. And some of the other towns, I heard, they might be able to work out a deal, whether it was March 14th or some other time. But getting back to what I think our secretary had said was, at one point recently, was people want movement, and what we need to do is, I believe his words were, a hammer at the end, give people an opportunity to try and work out agreements, and then at some point, a decision has to be made.
Yes, sir.
In your case, a March 14 decision.
We understand.
If you didn't make the numbers work by then.
We understand that it's probably a lot simpler for us because we don't run a school. And we do all of our own bookkeeping ourselves. We don't rely on the business office for paying our tuitions, for paying our assessments. We run that out of our own board meetings.
I guess what I want to say is that we don't need a hammer to move. Like, we're very willing. There's three of us on the board. We all have full-time jobs, and this is really complicated stuff. And it's very hard for us to negotiate with the superintendent and her business office, and with our business office, and really figure out the transportation issues, the after-school program issues, the, you know, the way the assessment's going to be made, and whether that's going to change. We need someone to help negotiate this. And my hunch is that if the agency, with your recommendation, were to put some money, $4,000 or $5,000, you know, for a consultant for each two schools that they get to pick, that that would be money well spent to get us towards a facilitated deal on all these, this myriad of little questions, and again, any one of which could really sour the relationship. Bill?
This is maybe a question for Vaughn, but I've heard three or four of the different groups' representatives say, a small amount of money to work out details over a short period of time. And I hear what you're saying, not a year, but something shorter than that. And I think that's everybody's consensus that we need to wrap this thing.
Yes.
But I'm just wondering, Vaughn, do we have any of that legislative money that's available, or are we tapped out?
The other towns?
Can apply for grant, clearly, to study. It's somewhat trickier if the decision is already made, whether they apply, I would be legalized, that part. But the danger I think you run into is if you give a certain amount of money to six districts with the ultimate resolution, you run the risk of some of the districts and some of the SUs thinking it's a great idea and others thinking it's a very poor idea, and then you sort of.
Well, I'm just thinking, suppose we took some kind of motion that did something, but it was set off for the future, so it wouldn't be a decision right now, which would free up the money.
If you do an analysis with each of the two school districts that are going to a separate SU, and that analysis for each of those school districts determines that it's not good for the kids, don't you want to know that before you vote to disband the SU? I mean, that's what we've been looking for for almost a decade, is how is this going to affect our kids? And what you're hearing here is that nobody knows, and that you have the agency saying, we don't want to know, because what if it's really bad for a couple of schools? You know? Then, gosh, no one would want to do it. Well, the whole point is, we better figure this out before we press the button.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Ma'am?
Hello, my name is Yolanda Labesha. I'm the Rochester School Board Chair, and I'll be very short. And I'm not going to talk about money much. I'm just voicing concerns of, first of all, our students, administration, and community members. My one concern is about our after-school program, what will happen if the SU is dissolved. I understand that the receiving SUs don't offer after-school program. And I was approached by the director of the Excel, and she's concerned about the cost and what's going to happen. And we have a wonderful after-school program, and a lot of families rely on it, and as well as a wonderful preschool program as well. So we have, like, people were saying, we have a lot to offer. Susan was saying that we have a lot to offer, and of course, I'm repeating that as well. My second one is, when we first found out about the dissolution, possible dissolution of Windsor Northwest SU, there were requests from the community about doing a study on our district joining Orange Southwest. And I don't know what happened to that, because I haven't seen any studies done. And so we feel like our requests were not honored. And I'm happy, I'm very happy to hear that Orange Windsor is gladly, would be glad to accept us because it does feel good to be wanted. So thank you very much. And we've, you know, we've played South Royalton in sports over the years, and we always, most of the time, we lose, but we still, you know, are happy to have that correlation. So first of all, also, I would like to reiterate the request to withhold making a decision. I believe it's still too early, and there's more studies to be made. And also, you know, the second one is to make, probably, hopefully, make a study of us going to, first of all, not to disband SU, Windsor Northwest, and then making more studies and looking into, maybe, exactly like some other people were saying, what's good for the children, how it would affect our children. Rochester is very isolated, and everywhere we go is over the mountain. And geographically, even, geographically speaking, going over to South Royalton is more difficult than Randolph, and we have our children, our students going to RTCC. So that's something that we have in common as well. So this is it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And.
Do we have another person in the front there? I couldn't see behind the table.
I'm Jay Leiter. I'm the chairman of the Windsor Central Supervisor Union. And the first point I wanted to make, relative to the previous testimony from Pittsfield, I just wanted to reassure you, we do welcome them. We have had introductory conversations, and it would not be a problem for us to accommodate them in our district. So I'm certain that we have people who are interested in solving that problem, and it can be done. If they leave Windsor Northwest, it brings you back to the basic problem which you're facing. The administrative structure of this small supervisor union is not sustainable. And that's really not in the best interest And that's really not in the best interest of children. And for the residents of the towns, I want to remind them, I'm talking about the administrative structure. Their schools are viable, the administrative structure is not. It's not in the best interest of children to have too little depth of experience at the central supervisory office to meet all the needs of the kids. So I think the larger districts can do that. I'm confident that Windsor Central Supervisory Union can step up and offer that service. I think the real question is, when you dissolve it, how do you divide it? And there's been some debate about that, and I don't know what the solution is. I know that we could accommodate Stockbridge and Pittsfield. We're people of goodwill, I'm certain that we can work that out. Norm's estimates are a good-faith effort. Maybe they're wrong, they're not that far wrong, and the savings may be half of what he said. But it's still in the best interest of kids to move forward and get an administrative structure that has the depth of experience that's necessary really to serve the complicated problems that kids in our district sometimes have in our state. So I think it's very likely that Pittsfield will be in the Central Supervisory Union in the future, and you'll have a bigger problem than you have now, because you'll have an even smaller Windsor Northwest. So I would go ahead and make the decision, and rely on the goodwill of the people involved, and allow them some flexibility to negotiate what the solutions are.
Thank you very much, yes.
I guess this is a Vaughn question, too. But I'm just looking at the map here, and just Rochester keeps saying that they feel more naturally inclined to Randolph and to Supervisory 28, so Orange Southwest. So why wasn't that taken into account, I guess, when that was created? And just wondering why, if you're looking at the map, if you combine, if you move Rochester and Bethel over, it creates a very awkward supervisory union boundaries. So I'm just curious how that came about and why maybe the option of Randolph was not explored.
Thank you, Vaughn.
Could I just comment on that? If you just dissolve it, I would let the towns decide that. You know, let Pittsfield and Hancock decide who they want to go with. Widen the field of negotiations is basically what I'm suggesting. If they're people of goodwill, let them figure out who they want to be with. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ma'am?
My name is Barb Harvey. I taught for 20 years in Hancock, the little elementary school in Hancock, Hancock Village School. Some of, I think some of the students, many of the students are going to Ripton and some to Middlebury. I didn't know if anyone else was represented from Hancock here, so I'm speaking for them in the sense that they would like to have that consideration as well. And I second the superintendent that just was here, his thoughts and his opinions. I agree with those. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to testify? We're running behind schedule, obviously. Do you want to discuss this now, or do you want a break for lunch and come back and take up this issue? Hearing no comment, we'll recess for lunch and come back at... Here is a proposal for the board to consider. We've obviously heard some very compelling testimony this morning on both sides of this issue. We've actually identified the number and the composition and the review of the supervisory unions in the state of Vermont in the past. And we have a study committee that's looking at that. And there's clearly some public policy issues facing the state of Vermont, the educational system, and how we address these things. And I think we've seen over time in other instances where, you know, it's not easy to do it on a case-by-case basis. However, I think in this case, being one of the smallest supervisory unions in the state, it's had a three-year study, that there is some sense that maybe we need to address this before we address the broader public policy issues with all supervisory unions. So what I'd like to propose to the board is to simply ask in a straw vote, how many of the board members see merit in this particular dissolving of this supervisory union? And if there's a majority of people that see that on the board, then we would say to the agency and to the supervisory unions and the citizens in those school districts to come back to us in December with a proposal. That's my suggestion. Hearing no objection, let me just simply ask the board, how many of us favor doing something in this Windsor Northwest supervisory union district of dissolving it and making sure that the children in that union get a good education and with joining forces with local other supervisory unions? How many are in favor of that? So I see eight of us voting for that? So...
Consensus, I think.
Consensus, yes, sorry. Consensus. So with that, I would look at the agency, make sure you contact the superintendents of these four supervisory unions, and see what you can work out in the next month. Because we will take a vote on this issue in December. Any questions or comments?
Just thinking about the timing with Christmas, with local board building budgets and so forth. I'm not sure it'd get better by January, because you're still trying to get warnings and stuff together. And I don't want to take this on, but I just put that out as a, something to consider. Is one month realistic, or is two months? But I certainly wouldn't want to drag on.
Well, it seems to me after three years that maybe a month will do it. I'm working on a hospital merger in the same month, so that's why I'm encouraged that you can do this in a month. So let's see where you are in a month, but diligently work towards finding a solution to this, because there is some, there's a fair amount of support on this board to support this, the premise of this idea. Okay, let's move on to an easier item. Review the EQS revised rules and public comment. Again, we are not planning on taking a final vote here today, but we want to hear from the agency, we want to hear from those that are here that have comments on them. Board members, in your packet, there was an outline from Jill that had this here. And the things highlighted in yellow, we will not take a vote on them, but Jill would like us to give her some idea of what the board is thinking so that she can try to work this out between now and the December meeting. It's Educational Quality Standards Proposed Language Decision Points, is what it's called. Jill and John?
I will let Jill take the lead on this. She's been a project manager from the very beginning on this, and has the feedback that will be under discussion today. And I may have to actually leave soon for another meeting back in Montpelier, 2:00. So I'll play it by ear with this.
We know that Jill's the expert.
That's what I meant to say.
Good afternoon, my name is Jill Remick. I'm a project manager at the Agency of Education. Thanks for having me here today. I just thought it'd be important to just, once again, sort of review the background of how we've gotten to where we are and what the next steps are. This work that we've been doing since last August is really about the board's plan to review, redesign, and rewrite the State Board Rule 2000, currently known as School Quality Standards. It's one of the goals in the board's strategic plan to review and update the Vermont School Quality Standards and the graduation requirements included therein to reflect college and career readiness standards for the 21st century, including proficiency-based promotion and graduation, and the integration of early college and technical learning opportunities. You may recall, we had the Education Quality Standards Commission met for several months from last fall through June. They presented their recommendations to you at that time. In August, you folks initiated rulemaking, and so right now, we are about probably 75% or 80% of the way through the administrative rulemaking process. We held three public hearings across the state as part of that process. We held one at Brattleboro Union High School, one at Lake Region Union High School, and one at Champlain Valley Union High School. This was a great opportunity for board members to hear directly from the public, from folks who hadn't sent in or had sent in written comment to provide public comment on these rules. We also held what we called internal agency hearings, which was sort of the same format as the public hearings for the agencies so that our staff could really spend some time digging into it as well. Per the Secretary of State's Office timeline that they've given us for this process, the public comment period ended on October 28. That gave us only about a week before you folks needed to receive your materials in time for this meeting, at least seven days prior to the meeting. So you got this giant file electronically of over 100 pages worth of public comments. So what we're hoping to get from you folks today is understanding that... I thought you were getting up to go.
I'll warn you.
Okay. A lot of the comments were, there were some that were very general in nature about those sort of philosophical points in there, and some of them were really specific language recommendations. So what we tried to do today is compile some of the language recommendations so that when we come back in December, we have a draft that's reflective of where you folks have told us to go on those particular points. The goal is that we bring this back to you at your December meeting, and then potentially bring it back to the Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules in January. Some of the, if you don't mind, I'll just go right into sort of a review of the public comments. Like I said, there were several, you know, several comments. You received well over 100 pages of letters, testimony at the public hearings, petitions, lots of postcards. And a lot of those really sort of could be boiled down to a few major topic areas, including health and physical education, access to school libraries and school librarians, school nurse ratio, class size and administrator ratios, the potential budgetary implications of education quality standards, ensuring we get the language accurate for things like personal learning plans and also individual education plans, the graduation requirements, ensuring there's pieces in there for gifted students, and also a lot of points about the clarity of the language. So, you know, there are terms in there like the equivalent thereof, or proficiency-based, and things like that, and so folks are looking for some clarity on those. I think Krista kind of hit the nail on the head after being at the CBU meeting, that this document is straddling being a vision and a philosophical document about the policy that the board wants to take within the parameters that this rule is given to you folks under Title 16. But also, schools are still looking to, and the public is still looking to, have some sort of a blueprint. So for instance, a lot of the comments we heard were not necessarily a criticism of the philosophy that is reflected in here, but they might say, we would still like you to have the ratio of school nurse, for example, so that those bookends, if you will, still do exist for schools. So that's an example of one of the things that you folks are hopefully going to give us some guidance on today.
One thing you might, maybe I'm jumping the gun on you, but I want you to please explain the memo I think we all got from the School Boards Association and the Superintendents Association.
Absolutely. So you folks have seen, this document has gone through several iterations. It's been rearranged, it's had input from a lot of different folks. And so we would like to, over the course of this next month, between this meeting and next meeting, take the School Boards Association and Superintendents Association and Principal Association up on their offer to help us do a really thorough legal review. Since the last time the School Quality Standards were written, a lot of changes have actually come about in Title 16, such as Act 77 and Act 153. And they have pointed out some pieces in there we want to make absolutely sure are reflective of the most up-to-date language in Title 16. And so we appreciate their help, and the document will be better off for it.
This is a memo that was addressed to John and Jill from Steve Dale, Jeff Francis, and Ken Page, dated November 11. So that's very helpful that they're going to go through.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And if I could just add that the associations have been very supportive throughout the process, and we appreciate working together on finalizing the document on that.
My understanding, their concerns are more legality than substance and issues with what's in the rules in terms of policy.
That's right. It's really about the roles and responsibilities that are put in here throughout. And as you folks even heard from this morning's conversation, if somebody reads the word "school" or "school district" or "board" or "local board", that can even be not clear enough. And so they're helping us make sure that that language is consistent throughout.
Thank you.
Hey, Stephen, just from listening when I was at CBU, even the word "shall" and having that defined, because some people are taking that as, well, maybe I don't have to do that. Maybe I don't have to offer these classes. So even in that definitions, having a word for what "shall" actually means, because people were really reading that as a way of reading the document to get what they wanted out of it, or not. So I was really surprised at how just little words like that changed the whole meeting for certain people and how they're interpreting it.
But "shall" means must, there's no...
Oh, but they were, yes.
They were suggesting otherwise.
They were suggesting otherwise.
Yes. So just making it very clear in the definitions, I mean, it's words like that.
Who's dictionary?
But it was so helpful going to that meeting and just seeing how people were reading the document.
Exactly.
And so I kind of could see what you're going through in collecting all the comments, so thank you.
So if you don't mind, there were some particular points that I really think would be helpful for you folks to give us some guidance on. Obviously, you had a lot of public comments to go through in a pretty short period of time. But there were some sort of major, some of those major points that we got public comment on both for or against, or in conflict with each other that I think it'd be good for the board to weigh in on. So let's see. For example, we got a great deal of public comment related to the physical education requirements. Folks like the American Heart Association and others were very active in advocating for the piece that you folks had suggested months ago about ensuring that there's 30 minutes of physical activity within or outside of the school day. We also did hear from some administrators that that was not a realistic expectation for schools to add to the school day. So it may be a point of, in our implementation plan, about clarifying what that could or could not be. Does that include offering options for extracurricular activities? Does that include when we walk my daughter to school, things like that? Or is that really a 30-minute-a-day requirement? So we received conflicting, if you will, advocacy on that point.
It's hard for me...
Excuse me, go ahead. No, I was just wondering what she wanted from us, because I certainly have a thought.
I think Jill would like some guidance of just how we feel about this new requirement on physical education. Is that fair?
Yep, and to be clear, on the first page of the table that you folks have online, it's gray, but I think on yours it's yellow. The language that says that each school shall provide students in grades K through 8 with at least two physical education classes per week, and then students in grades 9 through 12 shall participate in the equivalent of one or one and a half years of physical education is what is currently in there and not significantly changed from what was in here before. The piece that this group had added was about schools shall offer options for students in grades K through 12 to participate in at least 30 minutes of physical activity within or outside the school day. So in some cases, folks were advocating that even the language for the one and a half years of PE in high school is too much. And then, on the other hand, we had the folks from the Heart Association advocating for all grades should have at least two PE classes a week.
Bonnie, do you have a comment?
What that looks like. I mean, I guess I, there would need to be some clarity around that. But there's significant costs, implications to do that.
You know, I have a hard time, this is not one of my areas, but I have a hard time with so much concern about obesity and what kind of exercise kids are getting. And, you know, maybe I'm old-fashioned, but when I grew up, you had a PE class every day. And I understand the world is a lot more complicated now, and there's more being offered and there's less time. But I really have a hard time with, I mean, it's a national crisis that we have, this obesity issue, and why we're not addressing it by saying, yeah, you need to get some physical education in school. Bill?
Stacy had her hand up first.
I guess I was, I think, Bonnie, I have a lot of empathy for the, I don't know the pragmatic, but if we're going to look at it as a philosophical document and what Bill talked about this morning, if disruptive students is one of the concerns, I can't see that allowing for 30 minutes of additional outside time wouldn't have some, I'm kind of saying this negatively... of saying this negatively, my experience in schools has been allowing children time outside, not only does amazing things for their ability to accumulate knowledge, but the physical release and how that affects behavior, I think, is enormous. And if that's what a lot of people are talking about, I would feel like we really were losing the opportunity to say, at least philosophically, "Children should have thirty minutes of, I think, unstructured outdoor time." But I, that might not be what everyone can do.
Right. And I would not disagree with you. Philosophically, it makes perfect sense with me. I think one of the things that we contend with all the time in terms of schools is the issue of philosophy versus compliance. And this becomes a compliance issue, I would love to be able to do that. Either we're going to make the day longer, or we're going to take something else away. But we have that piece where we're also being mandated that our kids need to achieve, and there's, you know, we have to have certain, you know, certain amount of time, you know, class time, and where does it fit in? And we, it's hard for us to be all things to all people. And that's what it feels like. It's like, absolutely, obesity is an issue. Wouldn't argue. I would love it. In our building, our sixth graders have PE every day, and our seventh and eighth graders have PE every other day, all year long, which is a lot more than other schools do. But it's really tough, because there's also all those other things. But I absolutely agree with you in terms of the need and where, why it would make sense. I just don't know how you make it happen.
Walk one?
I think it's, it's kind of interesting looking back. When I was kindergarten through eighth grade, and this school I went to had recess all the way through middle school even. And then we also had gym every other day as well. And we had recess, this kind of thing where school started at eight forty-five, everybody realistically got dropped off at eight.
Play it on time.
And we got recess from eight to eight forty-five, and then we got recess again
for half an hour after lunch, and we had gym every other day. I think that, I don't know, a lot of the research shows that recess is more effective for boosting student achievement than what it's being taken away to do. So the school that I went to now only has fifteen minutes of recess a day because they are required to do all this stuff around like skill sessions and all this, you know, stuff that kind of goes back to No Child Left Behind. But I think it's, you know, important that we, we've not had a problem differing with federal philosophy before. So, you know, we're going to have the courage to do it there. I don't see a huge problem challenging us to do it there, but here. But I think it's true that there's going to be some difficulties in overcoming it. And maybe there's things we can suggest or...
And there's cost.
Yeah.
Bill?
My small question is, how does this affect athletics, and does athletics count as PE? And my bigger question is, obesity is a crisis, but so is science, math, technology, STEM, blah, blah, blah. And this raises another question, too, is if we go to proficiency based, which doesn't allocate how that schedule goes, what are we gaining and what are we losing in the big picture? Because we have to balance this whole thing out together.
I guess my question was, schools may not allow substitutions for physical education.
Yeah.
Lots of students do activities outside. I know students I've talked to are very frustrated. They're full-time dancers. They go every day after school to dance, and then they're being required to take a gym class.
Yeah.
And they're like, "But I'm getting that physical education. I'm physically active. I am almost a professional dancer." But then it doesn't count? So that was a weird thing to me, that we want outside experiences to count in school, but not for gym. And that's what I was struggling with. Everything else, you can have internships, you can have experiences where you're co-op-ing and doing all these things, and we count that, but not gym. And I just wonder, if we're doing, students are disservice. I mean, I have students that get up at six in the morning and go swim club. Do they need to take a gym class? Or are they meeting that proficiency and getting that activity outside of the school day? That's a good question.
I had some similar thoughts, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
But the, but, you know, and I actually experienced that with my own daughter, who did thirty hours of gymnastics a week by a certified Albany, New York gym teacher. But what I was told, and I mean, this goes back to the curriculum, is it's not just about the exercise. I mean, that's what we were always told, that, you know, there's, but health is a standalone. So I don't know how you weigh that out. I mean, I would agree that, you know, the dancer, the gymnast, but then you get into, if you're playing a varsity sport, and that has come up at the high school level, at least where I am, many times. Well, if my Johnny is on the varsity football team, then why does he have to take gym? And I don't know the answer.
I noticed in the first paragraph under this section, it says the equivalent of one and one-half years of physical education. And then down in the bottom of the second paragraph, it says no substitutions for, and that seemed contradictory to me.
Margaret?
Margaret?
So Jill, what I'm, I think it's different, K to eight through nine through twelve. And I think the thirty minutes outdoor time and the physical education for K through eight is perfectly fine in here. With nine through twelve, I wouldn't want us to have language that restricted student options. So if students can document their physical activity and work with their teacher to maybe, whatever, if there's more flexibility with that rather than less flexibility with that in this language, we'd be better off. Because right now, some schools do that, allow for different things. Other schools have rigid requirements. And we need this document to encourage flexibility around that. So that, yes, kids are getting physical activity. It doesn't have to be between eight and three. It can be...
Okay. Does that help you, Jill?
Sure. I think the point that I'd be remiss if I didn't sort of articulate for the folks who did come to the public hearings and presented public comments to you, is there is a difference legally and implementation-wise between physical education courses and physical activity. And so I think what the Heart Association and others were advocating for on the physical activity is that can include, that could include walking between classes. It can include, you know, time, if you do a five-minute stand-up, sit-down in math class, it can include the different things. That's very different from the physical education course. So, you know, I think we can try to make this language clear. It does sound like there are a couple points that the board does want us to tease out, the difference between the high school and the elementary grades regarding substitution or, you know, excuse from those. And I think that was in line with the Heart Association. One of the things they recommended was eliminating the substitutions for physical education. But if that can't be achieved, then maybe only do that in the high school level, and only if approved by the PE teacher. So if they could somehow, you know, so if that sounds like something you folks have...
Sounds good. Sean Marie?
Would it make sense, too, then, Jill, with the thirty-minute requirement in there, that you provide examples?
Okay.
The examples certainly help expand the possibilities of what that looks like.
Sean Marie?
So in trying to get away from Carnegie units, we're saying one and one-half years of physical education. Now, I mean, you know, what does that mean? I mean, does that mean one-and-a-half years of ten minutes, you know, a year and a half? Or does it mean a ninety-minute block in one school and a twenty-minute block in another school? So I think...
A little clarity.
This, this doesn't really do it.
Okay.
Well...
Unless you understand what, I mean, is there a minimum?
I mean, to me, that means, in order to graduate, you need one-point-five credits of gym. So in order to get that, you have to take three semesters of a gym class somehow. And I'm very lucky at Twinfield. I'm able, I took one actual gym class offered through Twinfield. And right now, I'm able to take yoga for like an hour and a half every Wednesday and fulfill my gym credits that way. But if, but does that mean that I wouldn't be able to do that anymore, and in the future, that's not something that's going to be possible?
But I think you're able to do that because Twinfield's allowing, there isn't a standard around the state. And in some places, like your school's different, right? The amount of flexibility you have about substituting the gym class for the after-school yoga class is more restrictive than in other places. And this document needs to set a clear standard that encourages that kind of thing. I think there's some fear around the number of PE teachers and all that stuff. It changes the PE teacher's role. It doesn't eliminate the PE teacher, because the PE teacher then has to approve the activity, has to have you write a paper, or whatever it might be, to show you're demonstrating the, you know, the demands of what the class would be with you not taking the class during that time. But I think we need a clear definition of it.
Stephen, just a clarifying question. So with physical education, it's in the Vermont frameworks. Is there not an air standards associated with that? So wouldn't the classes just be around the proficiency base and meeting those standards, so it wouldn't be that time piece again? So if those standards are there, do we really need to say the time? And if we want to say, encourage thirty minutes of physical activity inside school hours or outside, and then they have to meet those standards anyways?
Right. I mean, the Commission talked about that quite a bit, that we're moving away from seat time and time-based. But PE is a very different kind of learning, and it actually does seem that the outputs are increased the more literal time is allocated. So you'll see in your, if you review through the public comments, that the Health Department and the agency's recommendation is for different grade levels, goes from thirty minutes, forty-five minutes. And the American Heart Association's isn't significantly different. One is "shall not exceed" and one is "shall not be less than." So thirty minutes is the magic number.
Okay. I think we've given enough guidance on this one. Let's move on.
Okay.
Curriculum coordination.
Yeah. And I think this is a pretty quick one. This is another one of those pieces that was brought to our attention through the public comment and also from the School Boards Association about the newer language in Title 16 that requires supervisory unions to coordinate their curriculum across the SU. So that's just a proposed addition in there.
Okay. Any comments on that?
Well, I have a comment on that. I mean, for some places that have one high school, and it makes sense, for other places where there are students, there's choice and they don't necessarily go to that high school, it might not make sense to spend time coordinating curriculum that your students don't then participate in. It might be a waste of valuable time for teachers. So I think this is true in a case where you have a K to twelve district, but when you don't have K to twelve districts, then it's a waste of teachers' time, in my opinion.
I guess, from a teacher, that I'm taking students from lots of different school districts, and there should be coordination. So if I'm getting students from the islands, or from Georgia, or from South Burlington, if they're all pulling into South Burlington, there should be some coordination even at that K through eight level. Because otherwise, even right now, there's huge disparities in going back and redoing units. So I think it's just more efficient to have that, have that coordination. And I think you're right in the fact that I think it'd be, it's, every district, every supervisory union is made up of so many different types of schools, that that's where the challenge is. But I think it's a good challenge to take on.
Well, it may mean, though, that some small schools are coordinating with four or more supervisory unions on curriculum coordination, which just doesn't jive. So it's, can be an exercise in frustration for those small schools if they have students going in multiple directions, some of which are to private schools, and the curriculums are vastly different. So it's wasting teacher time to coordinate with all of them. It's impossible. It's an impossible task. If your kids all go to one place, obviously, it makes sense to coordinate curriculum. Great, you can do it. Maybe if you've got two, you can, you can make some agreements and do it. But if you've got your kids going in four, five, six different directions, and different school districts, some of which are private, it's, you're asking people to do the impossible. And is that the best use of their time?
That'll be part of our legal review we'll do over the next month to make sure we have that correct.
Okay. Let's go on to graduation requirement policy.
Yeah. This is just something for you folks to think about. I think it's also part of the implementation and also ensuring this is aligned with Act Seventy-Seven. Essentially, the default for when these rules get passed is that it's effective upon fifteen days after passage. In the case of the graduation requirements, some of the folks who provided comment, and something we've been talking about at the agency, is at what grade do you start requiring that student to have gone through the things that are required in this document in order to graduate? So this is just one suggestion for you folks to consider.
Thoughts, comments? Yeah, Bill?
I'm still wrestling with graduation requirements and melding Carnegie units with proficiency.
Does that come up later? Because I know we have people that want to testify on that. This is just the deadline that we're setting here. Is that correct?
Right. This would be the, specific to that section, the date that this would go into effect. So that if this goes into effect, you know, this coming February, does that mean those kids in May have had, will have been held to this standard? And that's not helpful for the field.
In the Carnegie unit, that discussion is actually later.
Yep.
Okay.
So this is, this is just a, an effective...
Timeline thing. Okay.
Well, I like the idea of starting with a certain grade coming in. I mean, that's usually the way, the easiest way, so as not to lose somebody along the way.
And it's the same as the...
I guess this assumes that we, that we go along with the later discussion on, yeah. We have no issue with the date.
Okay. The next piece, twenty-one, twenty-point-eight, and I apologize to the audience. We were hoping to project, but if we use the projector, it would be backwards to somebody and...
Are there, does Carol have copies of this?
I think so. Yeah. This is all up on our website as well. The second section about graduation requirements is specific to the piece about IEP, students who are on IEPs or a five oh four. There was something that was in here for the, that is in the existing school quality standards called a multi-year plan. This is actually the language that would replace the multi-year plan for students who are on an IEP or five oh four. And the reason that this language is considered refreshed for your viewing is that the way that it was written, it could have been misinterpreted to be that the IEP team actually sets the graduation requirements for those kids, which would be not necessarily the intent. So this has been rewritten by a team of folks at the agency to ensure that it's in compliance and has the student's best interest in mind. Here we go. Graduation requirements.
Okay.
What the Commission was really trying to articulate for you folks was that though the requirements within this for, are no longer, you know, a certain number of years for a certain number of subjects, or a certain number of Carnegie units, that schools certainly can still use credits for the purpose of demonstrating that a student has met the requirements for graduation. So if a student still needs a transcript that demonstrates a certain number of credits for whatever their plans are after school, the school can certainly still provide that to the students.
I know we have people that want to give us their opinion on this, so I would suggest to the board, instead of giving Jill guidance now, we'll come back to this after we hear from them. But I'd like to have Jill go through her full report. John?
Can I just add one comment to that? This has been debated and has needed clarity as well in the New England work on proficiency-based pathways. And our clarity on that has been, has been this, that moving to proficiency, the use of Carnegie credits as the sole measure of skill attainment is not the focus of proficiency-based pathways. Credit and Carnegie credits awarded for graduation attainment is still fine if the local board wishes to do that. But there has to be a better assessment of attainment of standards than simply a measurement of time and seat. And that, so that's the clear distinction that this is bringing.
Okay. School leadership, excuse me.
Okay, so have you finished the culminating document, taking the Common Core and the frameworks and putting that together, so school districts have a document, or supervisory unions have a, have a document in which to use to create the proficiency-based education? And has that happened yet?
The unified document of standards has been prepared within the last week. We brought the draft of that. It isn't in published format, you know, in, we redlined the pieces that came out of the Vermont framework, and we added the pieces that were added by the Common Core State Standards or the Next Gen Science Standards. So we have a unified document now of the previously approved Vermont framework, minus Common Core, minus Next Gen Science Standards, plus Common Core Literacy in Math and Career Readiness, plus Next Gen Science Standards. So that is a document that will next go to a finely published document that will be ready for public.
When will that be available?
We have the draft available now. We can provide the State Board copies of that. We have the draft available now. We can provide the state board copies of that. You can see the redlined, what was taken out and what was added. The purpose of this unified document, among the others that have been discussed here, is to clearly show that we're not narrowing curriculum to just literacy and math, that the pre-existing Vermont framework stands and, as stated in EQS, is subject to graduation attainment.
And so, just to clarify, in that document, so when it goes through, I know for my own content area, Social Studies, I'll go through, and there's something for inquiry under Social Studies. But then it's also contradictory to what is in Common Core. So that's been mitigated. So those have been, when appropriate, things have been taken out of frameworks and then replaced by Common Core?
For this first portion, I'm sure it'll be subject to debate and working document over the years that will require other adjustments. But inquiry is still part of Common Core, and it could be integrated. And I think what we saw were some previously integrated elements of Common Core, for instance, that preexisted in Vermont frameworks. So we didn't take those out. It wouldn't make sense to take them out. So it really is a composite document that where there might have been decisions to be made, we leaned on leave the Vermont framework portion in there and bring the Common Core piece in. So we may need to mitigate some of those.
Yeah, the contradictory, because those were two totally different. Because if you looked at the inquiry for Social Studies for high school, it's actually more now in the middle school for some of those skills.
Right.
And they're in different places.
Well, and part of that that comes out is the grade level expectations.
Right.
Because when you move to proficiency, it transcends grades in terms of a student, the flexibility for students to advance in an accelerated way or not.
And that's really needed to create those, that graduation requirements. Okay, thank you.
In doing that, the vital results have basically stayed the same, or have they been changed?
The vital results stayed the same. In EQS, we called them transferable skills and highlighted a smaller number specifically for graduation requirements.
Okay. It'll be nice to see that document looking forward to seeing.
Neither Common Core nor Next Gen affected that, so we didn't take anything out of it.
Good.
School leadership.
I have a question on this one before we go further in. It's a different kind of question. It's the logistical nightmare, is that if we have proficiencies which are specified, such as the Common Core in reading and math, then we got Next Gen Science, then we got Social Studies, which we haven't talked about. The driver's ed people will definitely have their list of proficiencies ready, and on it goes. And I'm just thinking, oh my goodness, we have this humongous thousands of pages of specifications and proficiencies. People will argue for their vested interests being included. And also, you have to keep this thing updated, and they have to be standards adopted by the state board, which will make the discussion of this morning seem very simple in comparison. And I'm just wondering if this is where we're headed, or do we have the capacity for doing that? And how do we avoid being driven down to test-based documents to do proficiencies, because it's the simple standardized way to do things? And will we, in the end, defeat our own philosophy of proficiency-based simply by swamping ourselves?
It was not rhetorical, I take it. So here's my take on that, that we will know more a year from now and two years from now of what proficiency systems look like. This is a huge transformation of education. Right now, this is a document that will guide us for a period of time. As we know more, as we learn, that one of our theory of actions is to collaborate with other states and hopefully gain quicker, deeper knowledge of this as we move on. I suspect, as you're saying, we will need to revisit this. In the EQS document, what we talk about is local boards must create graduation policies aligned to this. So I think that still provides an opportunity locally for schools to address this and districts to address this. But down the road, I think when we do know more about what a real proficiency system looks like, no one fully knows what that is. No one's fully implemented anywhere. I've seen a robust proficiency-based system in a public education system in a full realm.
No, I haven't seen it.
So I would say that that, I would say that's a challenge for the state board to keep that watchful eye, that we do not lapse back into a simple assessment solution for this. This is going to be difficult work. It's going to be a multiple years of work. And we know that writing in the background is this federal accountability system that has yet to be reauthorized. So it's, the parallel tracks I would see is, is this group and the agency and the partners and the state keep a watchful eye and work diligently towards this. The parallel track for that is that we continue to work to affect changes and flexibility in the federal policies around this, similar to what the Senate passed, that allow us to work within that realm until we learn a deeper knowledge of what this looks like.
Yeah, when you say, when you say the federal government and flexibility, I started getting nervous.
All right, on that, let's move on to school leadership.
Sure. So there's a few pieces in here. One is pretty clear. This is another example of some of the clarifying language that we're working on with the partners. The previous language in the existing school quality standards just said that the roles of those different members of school leadership needed to be clearly delineated. There's actually now language in Title 16 that does that delineation for us. So rather than including language in here, that still leaves that up to interpretation. We just replace that with shall conform to applicable provisions. We received public comment both for and against adjusting this, schools with fewer than, right now it's 15, well, in this language it's 15, right now it's 10, schools with fewer than 10 FTE teachers shall employ a licensed principal on a prorata basis. So we had two folks who suggested we upgrade that to 15, and then others that found that problematic. So I suppose my recommendation would be to leave it the way that it is, which is 10. But I did want to make that point, that there were some comments in favor of increasing that number.
Any thoughts from the board on that?
Who are making the comments? Principals, our superintendents, our school board members, our teachers?
Yes.
All of you.
I heard from a few administrators who said, you know, on the one hand, they wanted to be able to have the flexibility if they had two small schools with, you know, seven kids apiece or something, that they could share a principal still. But on the other hand, we heard from some folks who felt that the responsibilities on that individual don't lessen if you have 10 versus 15. And so why change that?
Any thoughts, guidance? I'm sure on your own on that one, Jill.
I'll put 10.
Okay. Now, is the next on the list that you folks have, the.
Staff, library, library media.
Yep. You might remember, I think it was at the Steakhouse, is that right? The School Librarians Association and others came and presented to you in favor of, and we received several public comments, in favor of re-including the language in the new draft to include the services of a certified library media specialist and also the ratio. And at the time, I think they were given the impression from you folks that that was something you were interested in putting back in there. And also, the commission certainly never intended for that to infer that there was not a need for that access to instructional materials through a licensed library media specialist.
So the language in the yellow here represents that you've gone back and, folks comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Bill?
For all of these ratio questions, I would recommend that we reinsert the ratio numbers, because when you start building budgets, without those ratios, you know what goes first.
Well, there's one on nurses coming up later, right?
Mm-hmm.
We hold that and talk about that separately?
I'm just pushing for the general principle of keep the ratios.
No, that's why. All right, you all agree with Bill, or you want to wait and talk about nurses later?
What are we agreeing with them?
Well, it's the next item.
That we don't change any of the ratios in staff.
The minimum ratios of nurses, librarians, and what other categories are.
You say that they shouldn't be changed, that they should be specified.
Keep them specified as a minimum.
I agree. After listening to those hearings, that otherwise, people are going to go in and, I mean, I appreciate the sentiment. The idea was, well, we want these people in here, we want these skills, and it's throughout the document. But without the minimum, I just heard at that meeting that they would go in and then maybe get rid of the librarians, because there was nothing specific in here. So I think it's important to have the minimum. I agree.
So this language in 2121.2 is reflective of what's existing in the rules now?
Right.
And that's what you want, right, Bill? Krista?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Need-based professional learning?
That's pretty straightforward, just clarifying the supervisory district, rather than just district, school district. And then right after that is the school nurse, the school nurse piece.
And the 500 students is what's in existing rules?
Right.
And that's what you all want to do, right?
Minimum for phys ed teachers and for English teachers and things of that sort.
That was.
No, that's more in class size.
Classroom size.
Yep. Whereas these are number of students per staff in the building for these particular ones, yeah.
So by leaving it at 500, we're supporting the Vermont Department of Health statement at the bottom?
Well, the Health Department and some of the folks who testified didn't think that the ratio was necessary, but encouraged schools to use the coordinated school health model and a school nurse leadership model where they're shared across the supervisory union. But we did receive quite a bit of public comment requesting the ratio remain. So it's not as clear-cut.
Are they contradictory, those two statements?
They don't need to be, but the folks who are school nurses were really advocating to keep the ratio in because they were afraid that meant that they would be cut. But the Health Department certainly felt that the coordinated school health model was a way for flexibility across the supervisory union, but ensuring that students still had access to an appropriately licensed nurse professional.
Krista?
I guess we did skip over it, but 2121.2, the staff.
Wait a minute, let's finish up here and we'll go back if you want.
Okay.
Are there other comments on the nurses? Comfortable with a number in there?
Can you use, give that both examples? Because what can sometimes happen is, there may be no severe health needs one year, the next year, there may be more. So your nursing needs change dramatically, dependent on your student population.
Sure.
Different than some other things. So having that supervisory union model allows for that, because you can take from here and pay to there more readily than you can other services.
That's right.
So I'm thinking that that's a relatively new thing, and that's something that could be promoted in the language.
Yeah.
Somehow.
So you favor the way she's presented it here?
Well, I guess less towards the, per number of students, and more to have this supervisory union model. Allowing for flexibility.
Maybe reverse the presentation that you put the.
Well, yeah, what's interesting is that that hasn't been a required thing for legislation for services, but it seems like that lends itself to more centralized services than other things that are sometimes required. For example, curriculum coordination, which in many cases makes sense and other cases doesn't. But this, this seems like an opportunity for centralization that could be encouraged.
Okay, are you clear on that? Are we all set on that one?
Sure. Would you folks like us to maybe present it as an or, so that schools provide one or the other of these models?
Yeah.
Okay.
Failing the model, then the ratios in place.
Yeah.
Okay. And you want to go back to 2121.2?
Yeah, and I guess Bill was talking about this, and I thought maybe come up, but it's not in Jill's document here. It's the class sizes, which then go to that teaching ratio, which I feel like we had different language. It's gone back now to, if you look in the actual document itself, it's not in Jill's breakdown. It talks about.
What are you talking about?
It's 2121.2 under staff.
On the big one, okay. On the draft.
On the draft, because it's not included in the comments section here. It's just that.
Oh, that's just librarians, got it.
There was other language, and I know it was actually in the comment fields in one of the documents they sent out about how class size itself. I'm just wondering if people are comfortable having class sizes an average of 25? Just because I know right now, I have classes that are 29, because when you average my numbers or somebody else's numbers, they are lower. But I have 29 students. So are we comfortable with that? Or do you want to say classes, you know, is 25 students in one classroom too much, especially when you're having personalized learning plans, especially when you're having proficiency based, especially when you're having multiple retakes of the same skill? Can you have 29 students in a room and do that? And that makes me uncomfortable. And also, having over 40 when you have two teachers in the room, is that, do we want classes in the state of Vermont to be, like I had last, or two years ago, 47 students in one class? And so the way it's written right now, it's really easy to manipulate the idea of average when it says 25 students per teacher on average, taken together. So we had other language in there that talked about keeping class sizes at 25 and then 100. And I'm not sure, do we need to differentiate between different subject areas in here? Because it talks about how students shall not exceed 100, except in things like art, music, and physical education. But I know art and music and physical education, all a part of Common Core, all a part of the standards. I have friends that are teachers, and they talk about how they need to meet the standards and show that proficiency. So do we want to single out certain subject areas like that? Or do we really, it says, you know, you can get, you can appeal to the.
For a waiver.
For a waiver. So do we just have the waiver? Do we need to specifically say, you don't need a waiver for an art teacher? You can give them 200 students, even though they still have proficiencies that they need to achieve. So that was something that really made me uncomfortable. Just what class sizes do we want for our students in this state?
I've never liked that. I've never liked the singling out English.
No. Yeah, and I mean, that's gone. And again, because we're now including literacy in every single subject. So it's just, the way that's written there, it still makes it uncomfortable. I still see that you're going to end up with teachers with 125, 150 students. And you can say that's easy, because you can average it together. I mean, I have coworkers that have 160 on their caseload right now. And really, are the students getting what they need if they're one of 29 in a class? And I'm not comfortable with that. So.
I guess, I didn't see that before, Krista. Thank you for pointing out. But I guess one of the things that I've heard, at least in our schools, that the specials are often the times where the paras have their breaks. And so a lot of the specialist teachers, like the art teacher, end up not only with large class sizes, but the teacher that's there to support a one-on-one or support the class in general, that's normally with the classroom teacher, is not available during the specials times. And I think that makes that an even harder setup, especially if those classes are large. So that would be concerning.
And we're all underneath the same standards. That's the thing. All teachers are working towards the Common Core. Even art teachers are integrating that. So it just seemed odd to single that out. I was talking to one music teacher. She records every single student and listens back to their work. And still, like, there's still a caseload. So how can we advocate, you can have 200 students, but the other teacher can have 100? That just didn't sit right.
So what are you suggesting here in 2.12?
There was some language that was, we had agreed on before, that then got changed back to this. And it was saying something, Jill, you might have it. It was in the comments, the actual comments itself packet. And it talked about class sizes shall not exceed 25 students, like a class size should not be more than 25, and that a teacher's role should not be more than 100.
On the bottom of page six in the comments.
In the comments.
Is that the piece you're looking for?
Right, so class sizes with a singer, a single teacher shall not exceed 25 students, and a team taught class with two teachers of different disciplines shall not exceed 40 students per teacher. And even that per teacher, I think you'd need to get rid of that, because 40 students, I think, is fine for a class not having per teacher.
Well, I guess 40, I don't understand what you're saying. Do you think 40 is bad? I'm a little confused. So if there's two teachers, you can only have 40 kids, you want them to have less than that?
No, no, no. That 40 should be a max.
A max.
Instead of having. Instead of having 50 students in one classroom with two teachers. I mean, is that something? Every school can decide whether or not they want to have team teaching, but for our students themselves, do we want students to be in a class where they're one of 50? Do we want students to be one of 50?
They would be one of 25 if there's two teachers.
Right. So, but there is a, the scale...
It depends on how it's taught. I mean, there's, I mean, that's, I guess, it would depend on how it's done.
Right.
So it's very possible that that classroom of two teachers with 50 kids is a better classroom than the one teacher of 25.
What is this last...
So I don't think we should be, I don't, I don't think, I, I think, and I don't know, I haven't read through all the comments, and so I don't know, or the budgetary implementa- implu- can't say that word there.
Implications.
Implications. Because it's, it gets really tricky, especially as, um, I mean, in my building, it's less tricky, but it gets tricky as the numbers get smaller. So if you suddenly have a classroom or a, a grade that's 26, you're going to, how are you going to schedule that? Because you have a class that's 26, but at the limit's 25, then you have to go for a waiver. I mean, it's a, I, I don't know how, at what point we get a little too micromanaging. That's, that would be my concern.
What's the last sentence in this section mean? Class size must comply with state and federal, uh, safety requirements? That, does that specify the class size?
There's some room, there's, there's square footage, so that's the safety.
So that doesn't get, get to the issue?
Well, it, it does, actually. I mean, that, in a different way, because if you have a room that doesn't...
If it's miniscule, you can't put 30 people in there.
Yeah, you can't put 25 in there. Right, exactly. So the, there's another safety net, or another place that that comes in. I just think that with...
Originally, in this section, did it specify the numbers, and you removed them in this, this version? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, the language that's in the current draft is, um, closer to what it had been in the, what's now the current ones. Um, I, you might recall, we had a board meeting discussion several months ago, Krista had brought up this, this same point about the team teaching. So I think there's a way to incorporate the team teaching language within here. It's, but it, it is a, you know, a question for the board, if you do want to have, change the requirements to, from an average of 25 per teacher to shall not exceed, because that is stronger language for the cap on class size.
Bill?
Administratively, and this comes from superintending, is you have schools of all different kinds of size. Some schools only have 20 kids in the entire school. And so the average language was necessary simply because you'll have six kids in the third grade and 35 in the third, next grade, and so forth and so on. If we did it both ways, we would, we'd have to say something like an average of 25, but not to exceed a number of 32, or to pick a number up there. But it'd have to be a much higher limit, because the natural variation is huge.
But I just want to advocate for students here, just because I, I've been the teacher in 47, when there's 47 students in 29, and students miss out. And, and, you know, I don't think that it's fair for them. If we take that average, I'm just, the way it's being used is that students, you can average that with a class of three, and so if there's a class of 29 over here, well, then the averages are 25.
Yeah.
And I know it's hard with different schools, but I'm just saying, what do we want for our students? Do we want them to be one of 29, one of 47, if they don't have to be? And, you know, I understand there needs to be room to wiggle around, but where we put that bar, everybody pushes up to it, and then they keep going. So do you...
Oh, if you kept the average in, and you had a max, which was a higher figure, you could have the best of both worlds. I'm just thinking of a mechanism. I don't know what the numbers are, but that would be one way of addressing the problem.
I just want to make sure we keep in mind that students, just being one of 30, one of 47, you're not getting that one-on-one attention.
Well, you don't get that anyway. And I guess I would argue that, that the numbers are there, but you also, really, it is about instruction. So there is, it's, it's not easy, but I think there's a way to, I, I just worry about us getting so, if we're dictating at that level, it feels really hard.
And I'm just worried that we have this now, that we want to be proficiency-based, and we need to be responding to students' needs. And to do that, really with fidelity in a class of 29, it's more difficult, especially if we're changing the whole philosophy. It's not just sit here and you get credit. It's, people are working on different projects, people are in different skills, and if you're managing that, and say you have 100 minutes, and you have 29 kids, how many minutes does each kid have? And I'm just keeping that in mind, when we're changing the education system, really moving towards proficiency-based, and to do that with fidelity, keep in mind that you need to give students more time with the teachers. And yet, ta- teaching and learning's going to look different. And so, just keeping that in mind.
What's your pleasure? What are we doing in this section?
Just figure that one out, Jill. Back to us.
How about if we, we take all the comments and draft something, and it might help to get a couple of these dicey ones to you between meetings to review, and provide us some feedback on that, so that when we get to the, the next meeting, or we've arrived at something...
Good idea.
It might be a good one to have the partners weigh in on, because I, I think this one is, the implications are potentially big, and limiting, if not done correctly.
Has dollar figures attached to it, Jill?
Has dollar figures attached to it, then.
Right, and I, I was going to say, I'm, I'm probably not going to say anything new, but I, I kind of want to put a plug in for, you know, the school board members who feel like, like administrators come to us, and, and there isn't the flexibility within their schools sometimes. And I guess it sort of leads to what, what Bill was talking about. I, I get what you're talking about, Krista, but in order for some, you know, in particular smaller schools, to have that flexibility to, to average out across their schools and use their personnel the way that they feel they need to. So I, I do like your solution, Bill, to a certain extent.
The average not to exceed.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Which one are we on now? Are we twenty-one, twenty-one-five? No, we did that, right?
Yep, and this is another, another clarifying the roles and responsibilities on twenty-one, twenty-two point-two, so, um, I, I don't think you folks would argue with that one.
In there, okay.
We spent a lot more time, not so much on, at the public hearings, but as an agency, talking about how we can really, um, not create some sort of additional burdensome report that schools have to comply with on an annual basis, or that is in a separate collection. And, um, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out how this could be something that was useful for both the schools and the agency and the board, to really see how kids are doing, but also not adding yet another thing for schools to do. You might recall that there are existing reporting requirements under the school quality standards, but as an agency, we haven't really monitored compliance with that. We've been monitoring compliance in other, under other requirements. So it was suggested by some of our school improvement folks and school effective folks that we really consider this being some sort of a three-year cycle, which would be consistent with a lot of the action plans that schools are already developing. Really, that we would, we would keep in touch with schools, they would file a copy of a plan that they already would need to do as required under Title 16, um, that the school could use for reflection, the agency could use as, um, a way of monitoring compliance with education quality standards. And also to get at the piece that I think was really more of the philosophical one by the commission and by the board, which was where things are going well, and students are doing well and succeeding, how can we stay out of the way and learn from that, versus places where we do think, regardless of the small n size or other measures, we do think we want to intervene.
So I had a couple of questions on that one, Jill. So, um, I was a little confused in terms of the agency would identify schools for the secretary's visit. Was based on what?
On the secretary, having a secretary's visit? Yeah, I think the, the existing school quality standards right now have the agency visiting up to 30 schools a year, or something like that, for compliance, and, um...
So it would be a compliance check, is what you're...
Yes, and a collection of, you know, best practices, but yeah, it would be. You know, there are examples of schools that may not necessarily have been identified under the adequate yearly progress system that we have, but we know that there are, there are needs there. This could be one way to, um, identify those schools. But we wanted to keep that language pretty, um, as far, flexible as far as the number of schools that are visited, or what that visit really looks like, um, and not have it be every school every year.
That would be interesting.
This, this was an issue that in the original 2009 Policy Commission Report, there was an extensive review of monitoring that was suggested in the 2000, 2009 report. That report gave rise to this commission. So, um, there was a lot of conversation, there went back and forth. The '09 State Board Policy Commission envisioned a third-party monitoring group that would be employed to do some of this. So it, it did have to come before the commission. I think it went back and forth a number of times. When you balance that with the pre-existing SQS that said 30 schools a year were going to be monitored by the department at the time, this is where that conversation led. So I think we were way over on a heavy compliance, in fact, a third-party monitoring group recommended in '09, and, and moving towards this.
Okay? Effective date?
That's soon.
What happened with that? '09 recommendation?
Do you want to...
I, I can understand the department doesn't have capacity, but if you look at schools having capacity for peer review and support, then I think you have the option for a good system. It seems like when we look at public assurance of quality, then looking at some kind of, um, system where we give peer review and suggestions, recommendations, we can do a, a really good job with that, but that could be part of, of this system. It would rely less on the agency and less on the, um, you know, on the secretary, but within this, within Vermont, we could come up with a, um, useful, productive, peer review support system that helps schools, the whole, helps schools look at their program and look at where they're going. But that could be part of this.
I think that's what the commission was trying to get at, um, in twenty-one, twenty-six point-two, um, that the continuous improvement plans would be reviewed by agency staff with assistance from other Vermont educators as required and desired. I think that was trying to get at peer review, and maybe that's not clear enough.
Yeah. But I don't mean looking at paper plans.
Right. The visits.
That's, that's a waste of time. I mean, actually going.
I think that's, I think that's the wave of the future, and as we build out and get a more comprehensive evaluation system, whether we call it peer review or an inspectorate-type model or something.
It's an inspectorate model.
We're going to get to a qualitative judgment, we're going to have to have teams out, and if you say, agency and other related educators, I think we're going to have to rely on field educators to pull that off. There's just no other way of making the numbers match.
And from the board perspective, the goals of that type of, of visit versus a monitoring compliance visit would be review of best practices, um, peer learning, peer feedback, that type of thing?
Getting people out?
Well, I mean, I would wonder, I, I guess part of, it sounds, it sounds great. I will also suggest that it's hard enough just to do the stuff that we're being asked to do now, like when I think about PLPs and all those things that, and they're just, I just don't know how that happens. And maybe perhaps, it just depends on when this, if this is going to go into effect soon. And it, it would require, based on what you're saying, Margaret, a fair amount of coordination by somebody.
Well, it used to happen, it used to happen.
We would do less, too. It's, it's true.
I don't, I don't, I mean...
It is true. You, no, I'm in a school, I know.
It can help with, it can help with things like personal learning plans and pathways, because it gets you on the ground, seeing other models that schools are using, and things that you might think, well, these that won't work here. You go to another place and you see it working, how did they get there? So I, I think it can help not only the place you're visiting, but it can help the people who visit. We used to have this system, we used to have schools, I can't remember what it was called, Carol Dooley used to do it.
Yep.
School approvals, yeah.
Public school approval.
And it worked, and it did require staff from the agency, but it required a lot more people from the field. And it was beneficial for you to allow teachers time to go and do this, because they always brought back information that was helpful. So it was like professional development for them when they sort of done these teams. I think high schools have this with NIASK, you know, to some extent.
And we have it with the league.
But elementary middle schools don't, um, and I think they need it.
When is the implementation date of this section?
Well, unless otherwise specified, um, the administrative rules say 15 days after adoption is complete, and adoption would be after the Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules adopted it.
I have a feeling this is going to be two or three years before this rolls out. Well, and, uh, this also interacts with the federal thing.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, explain that. Why is it going to take two, three years to roll this out?
Oh, the implement, I'm talking about the visitation teams, or the inspectorate, or...
Yeah, in order to get that, that model's not going to...
That piece of it, and only that piece. I'm done.
You know, this, I, I don't like the secretary thing, because what it's doing is it's hierarchical, it's putting onus, onus on the secretary to go and make these visits and monitor. And that's not what we want in our system, I, I don't think. What we want is continuous improvement, where people are looking to learn from other places, looking to try things and innovate and continuously get better. And we don't need a hierarchical model to get that, we need a peer support model to get that. So I would rather it not have this language, and not have anything until we can come up with a better system, than put in something which sort of, um, isn't going to do the...
She's back on twenty-one, twenty-six.
I'm reading twenty-one, twenty-six point-one, then fall back on this, that, you know...
I think, sorry, there's a few, there's a few points, you know, there is existing, under the existing school quality standards, that the agency is supposed to be doing some sort of, um, review. What we were hoping, when we talked about this internally, was that this is, these, um, these pieces could be elements of what's already in, like, the Green Mountain Star, or other, other ways that we already are collecting information from schools, and not an additional, um, reporting requirement. And I do believe, I really can't believe I came here without my green book, but I, I do believe in Title 16, it does, um, hold the secretary responsible for enforcing, um, the education equality standards. So that would require a statutory change. But we certainly don't have to do the model of a secretary's visit in, in this section.
At various times in a conversation, I was, and this may have been a, a wrong interpretation of mine, I was reading the secretary's visit in quotes, as it may or may not be the actual secretary doing that, in monitoring compliance.
Could be John.
But we didn't convey that completely in that language. I'm wondering if this is as well...
It doesn't need to be the department.
...a, a section where we could take a, a stab at a draft of this, and look at implementation dates separate from the 15 days? Um, I'm just thinking of a number of the things between personal learning plans, um, flexible pathways, proficiency-based systems, and whatever that next-generation accountability system with the federal government is, that then, this may have a, a good role in it to do some, some good work. So maybe if we step back and take some, a stab at what that might be with an implementation date that might be, be on the 15 days.
That would be great.
And specify that in here.
Administrator, that they have to make happen, or that teachers have to go out and do something else, when we're, they're already being asked to do a lot of things differently than they are, just the implementation of the Common Core, and, you know, just in, in implementation of the S-Back. I mean, there's a lot of work involved in making that happen and getting those systems going, and I think people, that gets forgotten. It's like, okay, let's just have the schools do it. We really need to think about capacity, and on all levels, and that includes the agency's level.
Right.
So I just would be very careful about how we move forward around this particular issue.
Yes, Stacy?
Has, has our incoming new secretary been a part of discussing this last piece?
That's, um, that was number four on my list, that I'd like a chance to, to talk with the secretary.
Yeah, I'd love to hear her, I mean, even think about if you, eligible for this review versus like eligible for this opportunity, like, I could see just there being a new secretary, just with a different lens, how this might be used.
Strength-based language.
Right.
Yes.
It could be just interesting.
So, the existing Title 16 language, it's, um, 160, well, it's, it's way back here, but, um, it does require, as part of the school quality standards, language that's in Title 16, it's one... It's one sixty-five, A four, B, eight B. Every two years, the commissioner shall determine whether students in each Vermont public school are provided educational opportunities. If the commissioner determines that a school is not meeting the quality standards listed in this section, then it, and then it describes different actions that the district has to take to comply with them. So that's actually existing statutory language, so we want to.
That would have no effect because we don't have a commissioner.
Right. We now have a secretary. It has to be rewritten.
Yes. That's on the, that's on the docket this session.
So, is that, is that helpful, with the exception of the, going back to the Carnegie units, and I know we have some people here who want to speak to that?
Yes, and we have, we have reviewed the entire new education quality standards and sort of noted points that could have separate implementation dates. So that's something we can present to you folks to see if you wanted to consider that.
Okay. Some of that may have actual dates, and some of it, we're still working through talking with a number of people, and it might simply say, implementation date as established by the secretary or established by the state board or something of that nature. Without being too vague, we would like on some to get very specific about when we'll implement that, because there are some expectations that some of these things like graduation requirements would come into play pretty quickly.
And just to be clear, we had heard that the Nurses Association and the Librarians had comments, but you've taken those into consideration.
That's right.
I don't believe they're here today, so I assume that they're comfortable with what's being proposed now.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that a yes, John?
Yes.
I wouldn't want to speak with them, but I think they were comfortable in our conversations.
Yes.
Nicely put, but.
More importantly, they're not here to object, so I guess.
I know we do have a principal here today that wants to talk about the graduation requirements. So Doreen Dorfman, if you could come up, give us your thoughts, and we'll, so we're back on Zionist standard, twenty-one twenty point nine.
May have a packet of stuff.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I have a copy.
Yes, it will, and this is part and parcel of everything.
For the record, why don't you identify yourself, and then you can proceed.
I'm Doreen Dorfman. I'm the principal of Leland and Gray Union and Middle High School. I would like to thank everyone for this opportunity to present to the Vermont State Board of Education, and to thank the members of the Education Quality Standards Commission for all their efforts. I would also like to thank the members of the Leland and Gray School Board, especially Board Chair Emily Long, who is also in attendance at today's meeting. My remarks address the elimination of course-credit graduation requirements and the proposed educational quality standards. Four years ago, I became principal of Leland and Gray with a vision of high achievement and a directive from the school board to challenge every student. Low state test scores and low college acceptance rates told us that while some students received an exemplary education, many did not. The multiple pathways and academic tracks prevented our at-risk students, at risk because of family income, disability, and/or gender, from a college and, from college and career preparation, which are now widely regarded as identical. The Leland and Gray School Board set the goal of challenging students by readiness, not age, and with the collaboration and extensive professional development of the faculty, we've made great progress towards improving all students' performance and narrowing the achievement gap in the only way that is demonstrated across decades and continents to have done so. There are two critical steps: eliminating low-track courses and creating academic support classes in math, English, and science, taught by teachers who also teach the core courses. When low-performing students learn alongside higher-achieving peers, they experience the real world in which learning is the constant and time is the variable. Not only do they benefit from those modeling self-discipline, organization, and self-expectation, at-risk students contribute much to the classroom learning experience. They share insights crucial to discussion and group work, expanding the democratic development of all. For example, you'll see in your little packet, in our English courses, teachers facilitate an activity called U-LEAD, which requires students to prepare and present their literary analysis. Next, their classmates describe their own interpretations of the text, while everyone writes the different analyses in a note-taking frame, thereby building understanding together. They write each student's contribution and construct a thorough, well-sighted foundation, which they then use to produce their own essay, filled with the arguments and counter-arguments heard in class. In addition, low-performing students attend academic support classes, adding fifty percent more instructional time with their teachers for pre-teaching, re-teaching, contextualizing, connecting, and skill-building. In these smaller classes, teachers can continually assess their students' knowledge and skills and fill gaps so that these weaker students actively participate in the course the following day. Caring learning relationships between teachers and students, so crucial for students at risk in the subjects where they struggle, will foster academic gains previously unthinkable. Students gain protective factors, reasoning skills, self-esteem, self-control, resilience to adversity, and true educational achievement. Let me tell you more about our school's journey. Acting to stem the tide of students leaving Leland and Gray from choice towns, I created a process of middle-school acceleration for taking high-school courses, beginning with foreign language. Success was immediate, and now, two years later, sixty-eight percent of freshmen who began in seventh grade are enrolled in Level Three with the opportunity to earn dual college credit. Seventh and eighth graders accelerated in all subjects, and middle-school teachers felt this pressure acutely when stronger students moved halfway through the year into the next grade, and the medium level of student performance as well as class spirit dropped. For two years, I repeated, only when you can demonstrate to the school board and our parents that you differentiate up with more complex instruction curriculum assessment built right into your lesson plans and materials so that all your students are continually challenged, will we reconsider acceleration? Teachers met this expectation in formal observations and presented to parents and the board. As of last year, parents' requests for acceleration vanished. They see their students highly engaged as well as kept with their grade-level peers. By eliminating low-track algebra last year, the percentage of freshmen who completed college prep algebra grew fifty, grew from fifty-six to eighty-nine percent. This year, eighty-seven percent participate in college prep geometry or higher, and are poised to complete their third math course-credit in Algebra II as juniors, which is the gateway to better colleges and universities. The shift towards a higher-performing academic culture has taken hold in older students as well, with seventy-four percent of the class of 2013 accepted to college. For years, this ranged between fifty to sixty percent. Every nation working to eliminate the achievement gap and improve student performance for all centers on reducing barriers to high-level courses and increasing academic supports, plus investing in teacher preparation, continued professional development, and effective evaluation. No high-performing country is taking approaches that separate students from classrooms or teachers, or relying on access to technology or instructional materials for students to learn via alternate pathways. Excellent teachers carefully craft their lessons and refine instruction to engage and ensure that all students learn. Personalization emerges by teachers building relationships, sustaining rigor, and maintaining close accountability. Leland and Gray teachers teach the Common Core State Standards, in mathematics and literacy, the next-generation science standards, and for all other subjects, Vermont's Framework of Standards. Our teachers instruct this rigorous curriculum and provide relevance so that students construct deep meaning and transfer new learning to other contexts. Our students cannot learn without this from their teachers. Before becoming principal, I served as a personalized learning coordinator for eight years, overseeing hundreds of students involved with learning pathways outside the classroom. While students appeared at first to enjoy the new pathways, this did not translate into academic gains. Rarely did they attain Vermont's standards in their topic because they did not possess the foundational literacy and problem-solving skills to learn without a teacher's instruction. Their studies of interest never transferred to success in other areas. In fact, many grew resentful when requested to work on subjects they didn't like. Struggling with home life, poor health, lack of self-discipline, addiction, and/or behavior problems, personalized learning opportunities remove them from class and place them further behind their peers. Rarely did multiple pathways transfer to the workplace, and many of those at risk have since drifted from low-wage job to job. In school, they needed extensive, direct nurturing instruction by devoted teachers to master essential skills and learn new knowledge. In contrast, high-achieving students thrived in traditional classes as well as enjoyed new learning options, fully supported in their transition to higher education or employment as their parents had expected. In the absence of home support, the participation of at-risk students in the untracked, guaranteed, and viable course curriculum of graduation requirements becomes their bridge to higher education and a prosperous future. While multiple pathways can provide interest in career exploration, when some students opt out of required courses with classroom teachers, the quality of learning, which is always a group process, diminishes. The school quality standards of 2000 specifying course credits for graduation need to remain in place to ensure equity for all. The proposed 2013 quality standards list the curriculum sources, the Common Core, Vermont's Framework, and the NGSS. Including this is an admirable and bold achievement, advancement, making it unequivocally clear what every student deserves to learn and be supported in to achieve. We will only succeed in reaching this goal by requiring credit-based core academic courses for graduation. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, I don't, do you have this sheet that Jill, we were working on from before Jill had that?
I have it over there if you want me to get it.
The way I read Jill's language is that it allows, maybe I'm wrong here, it allows the local school district to decide whether they want to continue with the credits or not. Is that, is that your understanding?
That is my understanding.
But you feel strong enough that you think it should remain in place, and schools shouldn't have that choice?
Correct.
Okay. Questions, comments from board?
I've got a comment. It's a little bit different slant on the same stuff, and she's absolutely right, and when we're talking about international comparisons, and this is one of the things I look at. When we're starting tracking students and giving one set of students a lesser education with lesser expectations than what another one is, we're not going to close the achievement gap. It's just not going to happen. It's just mathematically impossible to do. And so I think that's right. I have along another dimension, some concerns about the actual content of the Common Core. I think we do need common curriculum and common expectations, but it's not the same thing that is pitched in the Common Core State Standards. That's actually wrong for what we need to do, but I'm not so sure that that's an issue that we can really resolve. One thing we might look at at some point in time is this question of tracking and what's going on with the schools that are doing this. It's, that said, it's, it's very fraught with controversy. People live and die over issues like tracking, and they're, they're tough. Some teachers really love it, and some parents really love it. But if we want to deal with the achievement gap, that's where we got to go.
Sean Marie.
Well, just on that, no, the NEAS, when it comes through to whatever, however it is for accrediting schools, that is actually where they're headed, they're headed, you know, the recommendations are to untrack classes and to least offer a certain number of classes that aren't tracked. And it is definitely controversial.
Yeah, it's. So I think I'm confused. Because you're not, this is not about, credits aren't about tracking necessarily, so I'm not really sure what it is that you oppose.
I emphasize the credits because it is the guaranteed and viable curriculum of a school. The courses that all students attend in order to be able to say what the graduate of the school looks like. But you can ensure that the students have learned at the school, or at least were exposed to. And I also recommend that it be taking place in a, in detract courses, but that can only work if there are, is instructional time for struggling students. And so the best model I've seen is through academic support classes taught by the teachers who are teaching this course at the same time.
But in this case, what you're saying, as it relates directly to the educational quality standards, is that if it's proficiency-based, you don't think that it's, there's a viable curriculum attached to that?
I think if you don't have the courses in place that all the students participate in, then it jeopardizes equity in education.
But I guess, I, perhaps I misunderstand. I don't, I don't see how, I don't see that there's not graduation requirements.
Well, in the.
I mean, I think there are graduation requirements.
Well, in the school quality standards of 2000, it says four years of English, three years of US history, three years of social studies, including one year of US history, three years of math, et cetera. And in the proposed EQS, it only requires a year and a half of PE. It lists areas of proficiency, but as I tried to demonstrate in my presentation, that when stronger students who have met proficiency, who are still entitled to a public school education, are just passed up, the quality of learning for those remaining decreases, including the environment for the teachers to teach in. So it is a response, so my role as the principal was to ensure that teachers differentiated up.
I got that.
So that those students got that, sometimes even a college-level education, which some of my students were already getting, but not all of them, as I explained in the beginning, happens in the classroom. Not that we're trying to rush them through their proficiencies and voila, you have a high-school diploma, and the rest are left behind. I hope that helps.
Yeah, I just have to find it. So.
But in the, the way it's.
Christopher.
Yeah, you can have the classes, you just have to have proficiencies attached to them.
That would be fine.
And that's okay.
I, I, that would be fine if the, because the teachers, or, I mean, these are all proficiencies, and so the, so teachers need to instruct these and assess their students on them, and, and do continually, through multiple assessments, and, you know, all the different assessment tools that they use now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Jill, have we given you proper guidance under this? She's nodding yes. We're a bit off our agenda. Let me propose to the board that we postpone action. There was no action that we were going to take on H. In fact, that was something that we scheduled, even though we have a governance committee, and we were just going to let that be a general discussion to maybe guide the governance committee. So my thought was if we skip that, and we do recess and go into our committees at least for forty-five minutes, come back here perhaps for a half hour and report, that might be more productive.
I have to leave at three-thirty?
All right, so you'll have to get someone in your committee.
Just so I, I have an appointment, so, and we were scheduled to be done at three-thirty.
Well, I'm sorry about that.
It's all right. It is what it is.
So does that sound like a reasonable plan for the afternoon? Yes? All right, so we'll recess until three-thirty. The Legislative Committee will meet in the lunchroom. The Strategic Plan Committee will meet right here. Jill, you want to give the legislative report, or you want, want me to just quickly cover that?
Why don't you go ahead and get it.
All right. We've looked at the, at the, at the budget to date. All right. We've looked at the, at the budget to date, and the agency needs to submit their budget next week, which will include the State Board of Education. The Legislative Committee is recommending that we increase our per diem allotment from $10,000 to $15,000, and our in-state travel from $10,000 to $18,000.
No, from 12 to 18.
12 to 18, which would bring our annual budget up to $86,845. Now, before I ask for that motion, included in that is, we had a discussion on the, our dues for the...
NASB.
NASB.
NASB. And we've decided to continue that for another year, but we'd like to take Krista up on your comment. And we really need to get somebody here this winter from NASB to explain what they do for us.
Do you want me to contact, so it was Ephron, he's the one that said he would come?
Who?
Ephron, I can't pronounce his last name, but I can email his contact information to you, or just give him the dates?
Yeah, that probably ought to come from me as chair. And then also, in this budget proposal, not surprised, but I didn't get very far with Jeb Spalding on funding independent staffing for the board. And Bill and I met with Ally Richards at another meeting, and she made it very clear that there wasn't going to be independent staffing. So what the Legislative Committee in this budget is doing is that I will write, Bill and I'll write a letter to the administration thanking him for their support in providing staffing for another year through the agency, just to put it in writing.
That'll be effective.
I didn't think that was very funny.
The agency people did.
Oh, okay. So I need a motion to increase the State Board of Education's annual budget. This will be for FY '15 to $86,845.
So moved.
Moved. And seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Am I moving too quick for you, Carol? Now, I know we also have some action from the Governance Committee. Steve, are you going to report on that?
We're not finished with...
Oh, wait a minute, what else?
...legislative breakfast to occur.
Oh, yes. I was going to, we're going to, we'll do that when we do the agenda stuff at the end.
Okay.
Those two items, the dinner and the breakfast.
Isn't this the end?
Dinner and breakfast.
Well, just very quickly, so those of you that are going to leave, you understand that we're meeting in Burlington in December?
Maybe.
Maybe.
Oh.
Yes, we are.
As of now.
Yes.
Okay. Somebody knows something I don't know, but that's okay?
That's all right.
So we're going to have a discussion later on if we should have a dinner in some way the night before to honor Armando.
Are we on tape?
Good idea.
And if we do that, then we may have...
Get it on TV.
Oh. I'm going to put these two items off until the end, but I'll make sure you that leave early to get the message. I call on the chair, the Governance Committee, to give us a quick report, and any action items we'll take up.
Are there action items?
So I'll just share quickly what we talked about. Ready and I talked to Stephen about yesterday. You remember that the Governance Committee was inspired by...
We're all set.
Was triggered by the fact that we had suggested a different process for deciding reconfiguration, which is one of the statutory duties of this board, as you experienced this morning. And I said, there was a, you picked the most, it may be the most challenging spot in the entire state to have this conversation because it brought out every variance, pretty much, that you can have in the state of Vermont, all in one small geographic area. Since this committee was created, many of us in the education world have said it is time to get serious about the discussion about supervisory unions. What are they? How big should they be? What is their function? Because we have everything from two towns in a supervisory union, Northfield-Roxbury, Battenkill, which you dealt with last time, all the way up to North Country, which has 13, Wyndham Central, which you, the folks you just heard from Leland and Gray, which has 12 boards. Obviously, the role of a superintendent and the role of an SU is very different in those kinds of places than it is in a more reasonably-sized location. So the suggestion that I made to Stephen was that the board committee, rather than having me be the chair as somebody who has a connection with one of the groups that's part of this discussion, probably would be better to have someone from the board chair that committee that we would like, I would personally like very much to continue to be part of it, perhaps bring a board member, maybe Emily Long, who was here this afternoon, to have the superintendents, obviously should be represented, Jeff Francis and perhaps one superintendent, and Ken Page from the Principals Association. But our proposal would be that we can do a lot of work. If we don't do it in a sort of a mutual fashion together, this board committee is going to need a lot of hearings to hear from an awful lot of people about what's happening in the state, because it's incredibly complicated and messy. But that maybe working together, we can do some of the work for the committee, come together with the committee and try to work through these things in fairly short order. So the suggestion was, what you have in front of you becomes the charge for this committee. There's some dates on there in terms of trying to reach certain milestones in bringing proposals to you from the committee, and we would propose a change in the makeup of the committee.
And the leadership, do you take that up too?
I did, yes. We would propose that you appoint a chair from the State Board.
So in the discretion of the chair, in that I appointed this committee, I would expand the committee to include Jeff Francis and Ken Page, and suggest that when you need other board members or leadership members, that you just bring them into the committee. And I would appoint Mark Perrin as the chairman of the committee. So unless I hear objection, I will assume that's the official action. Hey, listen, in fairness, I talked to Mark earlier, so... I walked away as soon as I explained to him what I was doing, but...
Is that okay with the rest of you guys?
Oh, yeah, that's what I was saying. Mark needs to be the chair then.
So, I mean, what I'm doing is in the discretion of the chair, but if you object, you certainly can object, and we'll discuss it. Not hearing any objections. The committee has changed, the leadership has changed. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for including us in the conversation. Obviously, this will only be a successful endeavor if we all get kind of on the same page and start moving down a road, so we'll look forward to continuing.
And I think in terms of the charge, that's up to the committee. We don't need a voter, need board ratification of that. Any other reports from the Governance Committee? Any reports from the supervisor, from the Strategic Plan Committee?
We have a plan.
Good. Glad to hear it. Any other official business to come before this meeting? We will do our normal thing and talk about the agendas and stuff when we're adjourned and off-camera. If not, I'd entertain a motion to...
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. You can leave now.
Oh, thank you, honey.
Four minutes late.
Okay.
Am I supposed to follow you?
Okay, we're adjourned.